Order for the Santa Barbara School District. We will be, we're having our special meeting tonight to review the single-site plans for the four high schools and Washington Elementary School. But to start with, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let me, um, thank you, I should hold this. Let me introduce our interpreter for Spanish-language speakers tonight. We have Mina Thorleksen. If there's anybody who needs translation, which apparently there isn't, they can contact Mina. We also have headsets for anybody who might be hearing impaired and, um, yeah. We also, at this point, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the board for public comment? I don't think we have any members of the public here. So we will move on to our action agenda. We will begin with the single plan presentation from Washington Elementary School and Ms. Swaskin, if you can.
We are pleased tonight to finish up the presentations for the elementary schools, and we had two full days of presentations with Washington Elementary School. And I'll turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, Robin Swasky.
Okay, and we have Beatrice Cordero here, sharing her single school plan or the single school plan for Washington Elementary.
Yes, that'll, yeah. Okay. Just a couple of highlights about the single school plan. We have two areas of focus coming, this coming year, which will be the ELL, or the English Language Learners Focused Approach, ELD program that we will be implementing, as well as the coherent writing program that many of our teachers have attended the workshops this summer. And both of these are specifically to help students, all students, to improve their comprehension, fluency, and vocabulary in English language. So those are the two focused areas that we're going into. In looking at our school plan and our test scores, we have had a number of interventions in place for a number of years. And for the last three years, our test scores have been moving upward. The English language learners, as well as the Latino population, has made the greatest gains of all subgroups in the last three years, both in language arts and math, and have managed to meet and surpass the no child left behind benchmark. If you look at English language arts, the Latino population, over three years, has had a 14.9% jump, and the English learners have had a 17.4% jump. In math, the Latino population has had an 18.2% jump, and in math, an 18.4% jump. So we're pretty pleased and feel that our interventions that are in place are working, and therefore feel that we need to now step it up and include the focused approach, Susanna Dutro's ELD focused approach and ELD, and a writing component that will focus on not only literacy, but comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency. The biggest areas that plague us all are the short school days. So one of the ways that many elementary schools and other schools, I'm sure, increase the student academic time is by having morning homework club before school starts. We have lunchtime homework club during the time kids are having lunch, they can take their lunch in and have homework out, and after-school homework club. They also have math tutorials and are assigned by the teacher to work with math tutor, a credentialed teacher math tutor during lunchtime, and then the tutor has their lunch at a different time. So the child's day is extended, but the actual credentialed teacher for the district is not extended. We hire teacher tutors at all grade levels, from first through sixth grade, and pay them out of Title I and Title II. And the focus, their focus is to work one-on-one with students in the classroom to pick up the students who are falling behind in either language arts or math. In addition, we hire an ELD teacher who has been trained through Susan Dutro, who will, who takes all new arrivals, CELT I's and II's, and works with those students, but also emphasizes most of her time working with CELT I's, with CELTS I's and II's in grades, starting with sixth, then fifth, then fourth, as her time permits. The focus this year is to move all CELT I students forward at least one level at the end of the year with a daily ELD program that will include pre-teaching, post-teaching, front-loading. It's going to include extended vocabulary and the ELD approach with Susan Dutro. In our, in our work to utilize what limited funds we have, we have hired an open court teacher who has retired. One of my teachers retired this year. Is now, we hired her as our bitsa trainer through the county, so she can work with all new teachers as they come in. So we have an open court statewide trainer, who is also a bitsa support teacher to new teachers. In addition, I have a contract with her where she also works with teachers who are having difficulty, or in need, or do not seem to or have not had as much experience with open court as other teachers, where she can come in, observe the teacher, offer help to the teacher. She takes the teacher to another room to see another teacher. That time, the teacher tutor takes over that class and allows for the trained, open court retired teacher to work with the classroom teacher and discuss what's going on in the classroom. Then they go back into the classroom. Either one of them, either the support teacher or the actual teacher gives the lesson with a synopsis by the retired teacher. So they participate in modeling of lessons, classrooms, classroom observations, watching teachers who are more successful. They have teacher tutors on call, one teacher tutor per grade level, so that each teacher tutor becomes an expert in that grade level standards. In addition, they have, from K to 2, there is some instructional time. I have only four instructional aides, because with what little money we get, we want to place that money in teacher tutors, working with teachers who are experienced and credentialed. Again, Washington School has met for all subgroups, but specifically for the Latino subgroup and the ELL subgroup, has made the biggest gains in language arts and math in the last three years. And looking at the chart, you can see the upward trend. If you look down at the API, and I'm going to ask Davis, because I went into their, the API website again today, and their numbers are different than what we have. The school site, the school-wide API, grab it, it's so little, the school-wide API for Washington School. Can you see it here? It's not on this, oh, there it is. Is, is that eight, not, some of these, oh, here it is. Eight hundred and sixty-nine, and it's here on the data sheet as eight fifty-seven. On that also, the white API is nine hundred and seventy-one, which is twenty-nine points away from perfect, compared to, compared to what we had at nine fifty-four on the data sheet, which, and then if you look at the Latino, our API is seven forty-seven and not seven thirty. Is that correct?
Well, yes, because what's on here is the base, and what you're, we're reporting is the growth.
Okay.
So next year, next year, what you see in 2006, '07, the base will be very similar to what you just now said.
Okay.
And so what it means when it says met is that those figures are all larger, that means you met your growth. If they were lower, the figures you just gave were lower, it'd mean you did not meet your growth.
So this is good, right?
This is good.
Very good. So with that, I can, on page four of eleven of the single plan, I have a list of services provided by the categorical funds, which we pay for out of our categoricals. Basically, everything that I listed, the intervention teacher tutors, which are credentialed, the aides, the homework club, lunchtime tutorials. We also have to pay for after-school bus transportation. We have a family agency counselor. The tech lab teacher is paid by our PTO. Staff development, one page prior to that, on page three, you'll see that staff development is a big thing at Washington. We really work hard to carve out of our day when we can meet, collaborate, and work to plan for future teaching. And in order to do this, because our teacher tutors are pretty much dedicated to our school site, we make sure that we use them in their classrooms and remove the teachers out of there, so that the kids have the continuity of the same teacher in the classroom, whether it's a teacher tutor or their own teacher. So the teacher tutors go in and take the place of that classroom teacher. That classroom teacher comes out by grade levels. And then we, we actually put together our, our staff development. Again, it's based on exactly what we said we were implementing. First, we met with Davis Hayden about the STAR and CAD-6 data. The next one was on ELD instruction. The next one was on coherent, the coherent writing program. My teachers even went to carpentaria to continue to discuss and collaborate, because that's, that was the hosting district for this writing program. We consistently touch and go back and refocus on open court on a constant basis, because we really feel that that is the foundation of our success. And at the end of the year, we will sit and talk about what worked, what didn't work, what needs improvement, and where we might go from there. At grade-level meetings, now, these are all site staff meetings. These are the Fridays that we carve out and release teachers and put the teacher tutors in. The grade-level meetings are every Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, and the teachers get together, and this is what they are doing during that time. And then minimum days, because we are not allowed to put in agendas due to contract on what they can do. Our teachers felt that made me promise that if I gave them minimum day, that they would use it in a way that it would be beneficial to the students, beneficial to them for more planning time, because planning time for them is crucial, and getting together on such busy schedules make it almost impossible. So we've created the number of staff development meeting days for optimal implementation of new and old programs and review of programs. Everything else seems to be, I mean, pretty much the same thing, as far as barriers to improvement. School day is too short. We've tried to work that through by adding minutes before and after school with teacher tutors. Our facilities at Washington Schools are aging. I have not one empty classroom this year. We, I think at the last count, were the most populated school next to Peabody. And of seventy transfers that I read, and my parents argued this with me, they said, "Well, they all want to come for our music program." And I said, "I don't think so." Every one of those transfers said higher test scores is why they were asking to come to the school. So we're fortunate, and we have such a wonderful PTO, but also such a dedicated staff and parents who value the, their, the education, that they, they work hard to come to the school and be a part of the school to make the school better. But we are out of space. We're, we have, I showed Rob in the cafeteria today, and it had chairs and boxes, and that's where, that's our storage room. We have nowhere else to go. We'd like to have, with upcoming construction, maybe an extra room for music or something. But it's Christmas, so we're hoping something might come of that. Other than that, everything in the school plan is, is, is in the budget that we pay for, from the teacher tutors to the ELD teachers to the, we originally started out with AmeriCorps aides. I had two great AmeriCorps aides. We had put money aside for them, but we fell short in the special ed department tremendously that I gave up my AmeriCorps aides and had them apply for special ed positions, because we had students whose needs were not being met. Personnel is always an issue, trying to cover the number of people that we need to cover the number of students who need to be supervised. So we no longer have our AmeriCorps aides. One became a special ed aide, and one became a special ed aide, and then moved back to Arizona, so that didn't work out. But we're rolling along, and if the money holds out and gets better, we will do better. So far, we've moved from a technology tech person to a technology teacher on, and the reason we did that is because we've implemented a technology plan based on standards, and it's based on standards with the National Technology Board. It is anything from kindergarten learning, keyboarding, to sixth grade doing research, PowerPoint presentations, and spreadsheets. So it's a hierarchy of skills that students need to learn, rather than just hit and miss and going into the technology lab. And with our computer technician, she helps teachers keep students on those, on that, on those standards, and from there, kids expand, implementing those standards into various projects that they put together. So we have a PE program, a science program, that is, both, both of them are paid by our PTO, and we're quite fortunate to have that. And I think that's about it. Our music program is also paid for by our PTO.
Ms. Cordero, may I just add that we're extremely proud of the success of this program? This is one of our largest schools. It's the largest non-charter school we have in the district. I have never seen a stronger model for coaching classroom instruction, and I've never seen a principal more driven than Beatrice Cordero. Now, principals, don't get the idea that I'm going to say good things about this school, but we have had phenomenal success at this school. Thank you, Beatrice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly are excited about the, excuse me, the test scores that we do see and the success that we see at the school. Board members, do you have questions for Ms. Cordero? Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to start, and we'll just go down the row?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is this on? And as always, for your scores, that's always nice, frosting on the cake of otherwise good programs, anyway, so. I have a question, we just got this today, so I didn't look through it thoroughly, but the after-school transportation bus, I was curious about that. You've got it listed as seventeen hundred and forty dollars. It's a, is it, that seems low to me, that's a great, do we get some sort of special deal? Is it through Santa Barbara Transportation?
It has, it has in the past run approximately that much. We do it three days a week, it's not every day. So we do it Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and they pick up and make one stop. So that's how we keep it low.
And how many kids are there?
Approximately, boy, it depends. It's, we run after-school tutorials at every grade level. Some kids stay for enrichment classes, others stay for Rosetta Stone ESL. So I would say probably eighty kids, eighty-two, about eighty kids.
So that's a couple of busloads, then.
Well, the little ones take, yeah, it's one big full bus.
Okay.
Yeah.
No seat belts, though, right? Okay, well, thank you for that. A couple of questions I had on your list of limitations that I was interested in. First one, under the first page, challenges, and you have low-performing tenured teachers listed there, and I was just, that caught my eye, because I haven't really seen that before, so I was just curious what, how you're approaching that.
I believe that all teachers work as hard as they're expected to work, or as hard as they believe the program needs. What I have seen in not only my last year going from school to school, but also in my own classrooms, is that there is a variation of, of the understanding of the open court program. And I think, over and over, what I hear from teachers is, open court doesn't work for everybody. And what I have found, and this is by no means by research, I have found that in those schools, that the open court program is really, how can I put this? The foundation to the open court program is essential. It has to be done in kindergarten. It has to be done so completely solid, that when first grade comes in, they can build on it. If it's not built solidly at kindergarten, then first grade has a very shaky foundation. So when kids get to second grade, they have an even lesser foundation. And this is where we're hearing, open court doesn't work for all kids. And I agree, it won't work for all kids unless you have the kindergarten foundation first, built with a strong first-grade foundation to build a second-grade foundation. And one of the things that we, I really emphasize, is that my kindergarten classes, and all classes, do every bit of open court. They do the, they do the red part, they do the green part, they do the blue part, and nothing is skipped. It's not up to the teacher. And I tell them over and over, this is like baking a cake. You don't decide what ingredient goes in and what ingredient goes out, because your final, your final product is not going to be the cake, or whatever you were building. You have to put everything in place for it to come out exactly. And sometimes to teachers, things look frivolous or unimportant, and they get thrown out, maybe because of time, maybe because they think the kids know it. And what happens is that that ends up being a crucial part, maybe a year later, that the children weren't able to build on. And I've been extremely fortunate having the open court teacher trainers on my staff. I have, I have Celeste Darga, Caroline Walker, Jennifer Somerset, I had Karen Schroder. I've had, who else have I had on there with me? I hope I didn't forget anybody. Anyway, these teachers, I place them all at different grade levels, so they are the solid backbone of every grade level. And then, we do, what is a, we do a pacing chart. I don't give them a pacing chart. I give them a blank chart, and I say, write for me where you're going to be on what day, and I want you to gather for me to go, be able to go in and monitor and see what's going on. Plus, it's important that your pacing chart is together, so when we have planning time, you're all working on the same unit, the same area. And so by having that in place, it gives me the opportunity to go in and monitor, to see if a teacher A is doing what teacher B is doing. I've seen teacher A five pages ahead of teacher C. I go to teacher C and say, explain this to me. Oh, well, I didn't think such-and-such was important. I go to the teacher, the, my, what do you, the coach. I go to the coach and say, explain this to me. How is it we can do this, but not this? And they say, oh, no, you got to do this, it has to be done this way if you don't do this. Do you see three chapters down the road here, this is coming back? And because, again, we've heard open court spirals, spirals. So if you skip pieces, you're going to miss part of that spiraling. So you have to hit every piece, so when it comes back, the kids will be able to, to use it, to go back and dig into their past learning to bring it back. So I really believe that when teachers go to teach it, and they work among teachers who believe they can throw out a piece here and there, and it gets comfortable for them, it might work for the teaching program, but not for teaching the child. And that's why I say teachers, low-performing teachers, because I have had teachers come in from other schools. I do have my teacher coaches in there, and the difference is night and day. Now, when we bring that to the surface and show the new teachers that, they're astounded. We, you know, we work with them, I have the support teacher in there, I have the bitsa teacher in there, I have the coaches in there, they have their teams in there, and they want to learn, they want to add more, they want more substance. And besides that, our parents demand it, because our parents, you know, our parents, you're from, our parents go from room to room and want to see the same thing, want to see their kids getting what every other classroom is getting. And so they're very, very involved, and it is, it's really a good thing, because it keeps our teachers on their toes. And teachers who aren't quite as versed in the open court program as teachers who have been there for years, quickly go look, looking for the help and, and asking for support to meet, to meet the needs of the kids, but also to be at where the other teachers are. I think having a, a great group of teachers and having, it's like, it's like bringing in new team members to your swimming team. You have this benchmark of great swimmers, these other people come in, if your benchmark is here, they're going to go to here. But if our benchmark is here, they're going to work harder to get to here to perform like the other teachers. And that's what tends to happen. The thing is, is that it's happening individually at the school, and it's taken a lot of the resources, my resources, and I'm sure at other resources. If we could, again, pool these teachers together and pull them and start working with them like we did when open court came here, not to mention the new teachers and the teachers who were on leave at the time, but we really, I think we really need to punch that and blow that up again, so that we had the muscle we had five, six years ago. Because, again, I really think open court is the backbone to our success. We're not doing anything magical that anybody else couldn't do if they just did it the way it's supposed to be done.
And you're working towards not having that be an item on your challenges list next year.
I'm, I'm working to, right now, we have the bitsa teacher, the reading coaches, and my retired open court teacher as the support teacher to work in the classroom to help those teachers come up to be, come up to par with the other teachers. And what is, what is the, what is the notice to us of our success? It's parents. Parents coming in, and parents are very involved, parents watching, parents knowing, parents telling us, and parents finally saying, yes, this is good, this is okay, you know? So it takes a while. And new teachers there are, they work hard, they work very hard, so.
I had a couple of more items on your list of, of challenges, and I don't, you don't necessarily, actually, under item nine, the barriers and improvements needed, which you have the same list for nine and 10.
Mm-hmm.
That just caused me a little bit of concern, and I don't want to spend a lot of time, but.
Okay.
The large class sizes and upper grades, which I know happens at all of our elementary schools, to some degree. The lack of qualified classified personnel, and maybe by that you meant instructional assistants willing to apply for positions.
Well, from that, I mean, I started the year with eight autistic students, and each one of them had a one-to-one IEP, where they were just supposed to have an aide. I was sent four aides, okay? Four aides. I don't have the noon duty people to take care of the yard. Let me just tell you how my year started. No nurse, no No speech teacher. Short, four special ed aides. Short, two, um, yard duty people. We didn't get a resource to, teacher to the last minute. My custodian went out on an injury. And so, that was September, when my secretary, myself, my clerk are chasing autistic kids, and boy, can they run, around the corner, because they didn't have the people in place, and there were no eligible, uh, aides to place there. Same thing with the yard. Not enough people watching students on the yard, because people do not apply for noon duty positions for three hours for $10 an hour with no benefits. Uh, that's what I mean by lack of qualified people to take care of that, those positions. And Santa Barbara's expensive. Even people who are middle-class are finding it difficult to live here as a teacher or a speech teacher, so.
Um, thank you. The lack of communication with district office was a concern to me, but I don't, I don't know whether you wanna go into that now, or...
Well, I'll go into it, because I hear it from all the principals, and, and, and it's... We, I guess we have cut back so much downtown, and it's, it's... And these guys know it better than I do, because I used to be on the secondary yard. But, um, when there is something that comes up, we have to be in contact with somebody right away, and usually, we get an answering machine. And, and that's not healthy. Uh, we have asked for several years that even personnel, if half the group would take their lunch from 12 to 1:00, and the other half from 1:00 to 2:00, there'd always be somebody there to answer a phone. But for some reason, uh, you know, people go out at the same time, and, and, um, it's a difficult situation, being out there with five, 600,000 kids and, and everything hitting the fan, and who do you go to? You know, we can't get an answer downtown. Who do we go to? We go to each other, and we don't always have the right answer. So, lack of communication is, is not that they don't try. It's just that I think that we've been cut back so far that they're spread so thin up here that, um, it, it, it just, it, it's hurting, it's hurting what's going on, on, on school grounds.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I, I just wanna address two more global concerns, um, having less to do with Washington than with all of the elementary schools. Number one is, you touched on, on your list, the belated budget information. And we talked about that when we did the bulk of the elementary presentations, and it's a concern for secondary as well, that site budgets were late. There were carryover funds that were expected, then they were pulled back, and, you know, now they're supposed to be released again. And, uh, both Robin and, and Brian addressed it in the last meeting. But I would like to have somebody recap for us how and why it's not gonna happen again, we hope.
You wanna take it away from you?
There. How's that? I'll hold it in a different place. With Ed Diaz coming into the district, we've started a series of conversations about how we will set, uh, budget amounts in the spring, plan on those budget amounts, uh, so that at the beginning of the year, we're up and running, given those budget amounts, that we will get one update, uh, after, uh, year-end balance close. And after any changes in the state budget, that update would be about, at this time of the year, well, actually, the end of October, early November, and that would be it. People would have online budget lookup. In fact, that's already in place. And the people will be able to follow through with those budgets throughout the year, and that there won't be any back and forth about, uh, whether budgets are being managed here or by people at sites without in, information, ongoing information at the sites. Now, that will also place a demand on the sites to do monthly budget justification. Uh, you don't, uh, simply order out of a budget. Uh, you don't send in purchase items, and, uh, and you can't, uh, you can't purchase items unless there is money available in the budget, so it does demand more site-level responsibility for that. But I think we have, uh, the assurance of our business office. Uh, I know Michael Gonzalez and, and Robin Sowoski were both instrumental in that discussion, uh, to have, uh, a firm procedure in place that the principals can rely on. And I think every principal around this table appreciates that, because they've all been put in that position of getting a budget at one point, then seeing at another point that, oh, it looks different, that there's money there, or there's money that's not there that, that they didn't know about earlier. Uh, they haven't had timely nor ongoing reports.
I wanna add a little bit, too, with our new, um, single-plan document, that it's not a spending plan. It's built around the programs and the actions that are linked to the categorical budgets. It's, um, it's much easier to plan with the specific items that you need to, you know, use that funding for, and the whole notion that you have carryover is kind of gone away, because we know that we're supposed to spend the money the year the kids generate it, generate it, and that we have an action plan to use it. So, it's going to be much easier. It's not a matter of, you know, like, just finding some money to buy something with during the year. It's gotta be in your plan, approved by your site council, you know, presented to the board, of course. And, and the, the plans are working documents, so they do change. So, if we find in activities not getting the expected results that we have, we'll change it, and maybe that, that funding source may go to a different type of activity, but there's not gonna be that major of a change during the year. I think that, in conjunction with new structures in place with our fiscal department, will really, you know, help end this problem that we've had.
Okay. The other, more by way of observation than a question, but, um, Ms. Cordero certainly, uh, spoke to it with, uh, great authority, and that is, I really worry about the fidelity of delivery of open court. And I think before we made the shift to open court as a district, as an elementary district, um, schools were, were teaching bilingual programs, but they were using all different curriculum, all different programs. You know, there was no accountability for results. But I'm really concerned, particularly as we're introducing the new ELD portion, that exactly what Ms. Cordero was describing is gonna be happening at a greater acceleration rate at each of our elementary school campuses. And as it is, some of them aren't using open court across the grade levels. They're using other programs, and I have real, real concerns about that. Um, and I, I mean, I'd love to hear, I mean, obviously, we heard Ms. Cordero's observations about it. Um, I'd love to know if there's a way, um, to monitor it better.
It, it's also a concern of mine, and we've talked about it somewhat with principals, not as a group as much as I have individually. And, um, the, let me address the ELD component. That, that's very clearly not to take it place of any of the English language arts, open court time. That's outside of that, and that's been, that has led us to really look at that time that we use open court and how we use it, because in trying to kind of calibrate the time during the day and figure out when the ELD time can fit in, teachers have really had to look at what they're doing when, and because they're sharing students, in many cases, with the ELD groupings, they've had to really look at that language arts block and get it a little bit more precise about what they're doing. So, that's been an opportunity for me to work with the principals, start working with places where I consider that the fidelity's not there in the implementation, and to work with that, and, um, it, I'll just say it is a concern of mine as well.
Okay.
Because Beatrice described it very well, that analogy of the cake. If you don't put it all in, I mean, it's a research-based program, and the research only works when you use it as the research was, you know, as it was designed with...
Okay.
To make the research.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that also, uh, from the secondary point of view. Uh, in a former life, as an AB-75 trainer, one of the things that we, uh, saw at the state level was the linking of the program implementation, uh, of AB-466. And that's the, the full training in open court, or Houghton-Mifflin, or McDougal-Littell, that teachers go through. And then that was coupled with AB-75, giving principals the tools to walk into a classroom and to judge the fidelity of the implementation of the program. And, uh, I, I just wanna compliment Beatrice for being someone who took that to heart and goes in and checks. Uh, if we're not checking, if, if we have people putting a pinch of this and a pinch of that into the soup, we're not getting the learning. We may be getting some kind of teaching, but not the learning. Uh, we've threatened at points to, to bring a semi-trailer to the schools and to go into the cupboards and to load out all of the pieces that are not program-specific. Teachers will add this, add that, put books here. We're gonna use a little of this, and pretty soon, the research base is gone. And so, fidelity to the program is critical. Uh, you've really touched on it, uh, and you've touched on a real sore point for me. Uh, I think you can tell, because if you don't get the results, as Beatrice is saying, you know why. We don't have the fidelity to the program.
Um, and then, just, just a compliment. Um, I know that you don't have a huge number of Title I students, so you have, obviously, less categorical funding to work with than some other elementary school sites, and you've, you've used your, your funding pretty strategically. So, great. Thank you very much.
That's my forte. But legal. Clever, but legal.
I have some, thank you for your presentation, and I have some very, kind of, specific questions, but, um, your composition of your site council, given that you must have all these parents who are so involved, I'm, uh, maybe there's something, this isn't the complete list or something. I'm not, could you clarify that?
Right. There, I had a page in here, um, the page before, and I don't know, um, there was, I have a couple more parents in here, and somehow, the old one came up. So, yeah, I saw that.
So, you actually have more parents on your...
Oh, yeah. I have two more. I have two. Pat Santiago, for sure, is not on there.
Right. That's right.
I have, um, Jose Landeros, and then I have another parent, and I can never remember her name. Marshall's, it'd be the last name, so I have two other parents on there.
And your PTO has, uh, provide, you were emphasizing how much support they have. They do fundraisers and so forth, and that's...
They do fundraisers. They, uh, they are an amazing group of, uh, parents. They are, um, they're involved with the construction of the two condo units that are going in, uh, at Washington, making sure that Washington isn't overrun by, uh, and the kids aren't overrun by, uh, the condos rather than the safety of the kids. They contacted, uh, the police department. We were short on crossing guards this year. They, you know, they do everything. They're just wonderful. Today, the PTO president herself and her group of, uh, of drummers came at lunchtime and performed at lunchtime African drum, drum songs, which is just amazing, so. They, they go above and beyond.
Before you go on, I, I need to comment about condominiums near Washington School, lest, uh, you, you think that they're building any condominiums. Uh, there are two pieces of property. There's one piece of property immediately to the west. We're negotiating what we consider a, a property swap with what we, uh, use as our auxiliary parking lot, uh, for Washington School. Uh, that will come to the board at a later point. There isn't, uh, any anticipation of any building on that property right now. Uh, in fact, it looks as if that property may actually be sold with, uh, with conceptual approval. Uh, the other is a property immediately to the north of Washington School, and the church is, uh, has that property for sale and would like to sell that with conceptual approval as well. Uh, so, there are no projects currently on the boards.
Nice principal home would be nice.
Do, maybe I'm not clear on, on how this works exactly, but a lot of your, um, students come from other schools at third grade? They come in at third grade. Is that correct?
Well, we, our population comes from the west side of Santa Barbara. Sorry, from west side of Santa Barbara. Uh, we share boundaries with Franklin, uh, and downtown, and also the Mesa area. In addition, uh, parents sign up for transfer requests, and, uh, if there are openings, we do a lottery and allow pa- parents in as space allows.
Okay.
So, we do get them from every, just about everywhere.
Are most of their transfers in non-Latino? Is that...
Um, most of them are non-Latino. We really work hard to try to keep our diversity up. Um, again, working with Franklin School, if you're full, send them to me, send them to me, that kind of a thing. But, um, uh, right now, it's, I think, a hundred and fifty-four Latinos and a hundred and eighty-four Anglos and then all others. So, it's, it's, it's pretty close.
It's the, I guess I'm responding to the, the numbers for GATE and Latinos in GATE.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's kind of shot, it's 4.7% versus, is that where I'm... And seventy, yeah. Oh, it's four versus six, yeah, four students versus 67 students. Just wondered if you'd comment on that.
No, I agree. The number is, um, I think, far too low. Back when Debbie Flores was here, she had allowed me, I think, about three or four guest spaces for high-achieving Latinos, and somehow, that ended up changing as I left, or something happened, and, and that ended up getting confused with just high-achieving people. So, we did away with the, with the guests altogether. But, um, it is a... I, I, I don't know much about the test. You'd have to ask Davis. I find, you know, I find it surprising that we don't have a lot more in here. I'd like to see it at 50/50, honestly. But, um, language is a major barrier, uh, and there needs to be maybe a test that isn't writing on just the English language.
Actually, uh, our new program, GATE program coordinator, Teresa Kuntz, is working with Barbie Evans, our testing and identification, uh, coordinator, and they're looking at other districts to see, to find districts that are doing a better job of identifying, um, other types of students to, you know, minority students, basically, into, or underrepresented students into the GATE programs. And so, they're looking at the testing, and we're hoping we won't be able to change it this year, because our testing is happening in January, but by next year, we will. In Teresa meeting with all of the principals this year, every single principal, without her asking about it, told her that that was a problem, an issue that they didn't understand why, because they have lots of students who they believe are qualified to be in the GATE program and should be, and they're not there. So, that's something we're really working on, and you should see a difference by next year.
Well, can, I just wanna comment on that really quickly, because that was the concern, a concern of mine at the GATE, parent, parent GATE meeting, um, and I asked about whether there would be a meeting for Spanish-speaking parents, because none of the information at the GATE meeting was, uh, there was not a translator available. It was not given in Spanish. Parents, children who have Spanish-speaking parents, um, would not have, their parents would not have had a, a arena in which to get the meeting that the other parent, I'm sorry, get the information that the other parents were receiving that encourage participation in GATE. And I was, I, I think, uh, Mr. Zettel said that there would be a, a Spanish-language meeting for GATE being, uh, scheduled, and I was wondering if that has been scheduled yet.
Okay. We actually have a, uh, an elementary GATE informational night. The information's going out as soon as Barbara Ciani gets back. It's on December 5th. And, um, Teresa Kuntz is actually fully bilingual, and she is going to be working... I, I don't know if she'll get a translator there, and we'll have it, you know, together, um, or she will meet with the Spanish-speaking parents separately, but she's fully aware of that. That's a big piece of what she's trying to work on in our district.
Yeah, and then, uh, the information, I hope, will also go out...
Yes.
Bilingually.
Yes.
Because, I'm sorry, will, will you... The, the, those numbers caught my attention, too, and I think this is just an area... think this is just an area that, as a district, and certainly is, I think, every single school, every individual school needs to address it, but as a district, we've been saying this for at least the thirty years since I graduated from high school. And we say it year after year after year after year, but the numbers haven't changed. In fact, I think they, in some cases, it seems like they've gotten lower. And in, in fact, at Washington, they went down marginally, but they did go down. So, this is something I think we need to be really taking a serious look at, because it's it's one of those areas where, in most of, in most of our other areas that we consider important, we don't just accept continual non-success. We actually do something to try to make the success happen.
That issue has been addressed over the years that I've been here in the district, and it's been addressed in two different ways. One is, since the assessments are dominated by English language and English language achievement, there was an attempt to install non-language tests, and as a result of that, the district was able to identify only one additional student over a number of years. There were other factors also included in the criteria for identification of students, so it's not simply a test score. There are other factors that are included. And because those efforts have failed, we're going to again revisit this. But I don't want anyone to think that we haven't been doing anything about it for a number of years.
Yeah. And I don't mean to imply that we haven't been doing anything, but we haven't been succeeding. So, that's the issue. Ms. Malakoff, did you have additional questions?
No, I think that's it, but thank you. You have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. I have a great staff, and I owe it all to them.
You definitely do have a lot to be proud of, and the school has a lot to be proud of, and I think that's, clearly, we see that reflected in in your test scores and in other aspects of the school. I had just one, most of my other questions were touched on already, but I did have one additional question. First of all, just very quickly, the numbers that you just gave, as you said, a hundred and fifty-four Latinos, a hundred and eighty-four Anglos, but that falls pretty, that falls far short of the five hundred and seventy-two students. I'm wondering if perhaps you meant two hundred and fifty-four, two hundred?
No, I'm speaking of the number of students who were tested. Three hundred and seventy-nine students were tested.
Oh, okay.
A hundred and fifty-four were Hispanic, a hundred and eighty-four were Anglo.
So, that's only the students who were tested?
Yeah, only, and, right.
Okay. Then, the other question that I had really quickly, and is, you were talking about how important it is for open court to be implemented faithfully, and especially at, you said, starting in kindergarten, because if you leave out anything in kindergarten, it hurts the student later on as they progress up through the grades. I'm wondering, when students enter your school at a more advanced grade, with, I mean, maybe they come in at second grade or third grade, and the the curriculum is so open court-based, having missed all of that preparatory, you know, instruction, what what's in place to accommodate those students who enter without that foundation?
Two things. Last year, Robin and I were able to work with preschool, and we had them start a pilot open court program in preschool. So, we were really happy about that, because we thought that was going to be a major, major foundation for second language learners. But specifically in my school, when they come in and they are not at the level they're supposed to be because of open court, that's where the teacher tutor comes in. So, that the teacher does the direct instruction of all, all the parts of the open court, talking about the vocabulary, the setting, the clues, the wonderings, talking about the blending of the words, going in, going into how the unit is part of the concept board, because it carries a theme on. And then the nuances, the 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 blends, the dip-thongs, or whatever that they're having to learn. When the teacher, the students are doing their workshop, the teacher tutor can pull that student, and in five and ten minutes, can just one-on-one zap the student with information, bringing him up to date, teaching him the sound spelling cards, teaching him the the words, the vocabulary, the 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 actual vocabulary of open court, such as connections, predictions, and clarifying. And and so, that's the, that's the value of having a credential teacher versus an instructional aide. And and I have nothing against instructional aides. I started as an instructional, I started as a noon duty aide, to give you an idea, at nineteen, and became an instructional aide, and then teachers, and then so forth. But the credential teacher who takes the child aside has so much more in their bag of tricks, they can get through in five and ten minutes, and you see these kids different times of the day, you know, one-on-one, the child has no time not to focus. I mean, it's one-on-one eyeball to eyeball, and the kids are picking it up, and they're hearing it, because it happens every day in that language, a portion of their of their education. In addition, they they also hear it from the other kids, they go into the workshop time, they discuss it during workshop time, those words are consistent, consistently talking about predictions, consistently talking about clues, wonderings, they're consistently talking about connections, and, you know, all of that. So, the kids get a very good, year after year after year after year, have a very good, solid, and foundation of that program. So, the new kids come in, they pick it up pretty quickly, because it's like another language. And, you know, whether it's open court or Houghton Mifflin, any reading program, you have to do it letter by letter, or it's not going to happen. And ours happens to be open court. So, the dedication to open court is, this is our program, and we're going to do it from beginning to end, and we're not going to have success. Now, if it was Houghton Mifflin, I'd I'd say the same thing, but we do open court, and we have found tremendous success with it. So, that's how we try to keep kids up. We also have the after-school tutorials, we have to also have summer school. If the child is too far behind, we do an SST. I hire people after hours to work with students individually, either an aide or a teacher tutor or somebody who has extra time to give extra time to that child, and it's part of the SST process, too. Lot of interventions in place.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Well, thank you. We'll let you off the hot seat now.
Thank you.
And we appreciate another, another great year. We'll come back to Dr. Sarvis, and you can introduce Mr. Zettel.
Great. Thank you. Well, we'd like to continue with the high schools. We're going to be starting with Kathy Abney, and I'd like to alert the board to the packet that you have in front of you, so that you see the the goal sheets for each of the other comprehensive high schools. Actually, you have a sheet, you have the sheet for Washington.
Thank you.
You have it then for Dos Pueblos and Marcos and Santa Barbara High School. And you won't see one for our La Cuesta programs, our our four continuation high schools at La Cuesta, and that's because this is a small school. This model doesn't fit that small school approach very well, and this is why the state of California, the CDE, implemented an alternative accountability model for small schools like continuation high schools. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jan Zettel, who is our Assistant Superintendent, Secondary Education.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Board, I'm very pleased tonight to bring forward the the single plans for student achievement for all of our high schools. You've had the opportunity to hear the excellent programs that are going on at our junior highs, and tonight, I think you'll be similarly impressed with the work that our leadership at the high schools are up to. Our first person, as Dr. Sarvis said, is Kathy Abney, our esteemed senior principal.
And senior citizen.
Not, no, you're hardly that, my dear.
Catherine the Great.
Catherine the Great. And because, we call her alternative, but it means that she has so many different programs that she deals with, and so many needy children that she deals with, and does it so well, she's been honored by the state, of course, as all of you know, as as our top principal in the alternative programs. And now you have a chance to hear the exciting things that are going on right now at La Cuesta.
Thank you, Mr. Zell. Thank you, board. And I'm on. Okay. It occurred to me that probably most of you know about the La Cuesta programs, but some of you might not, so I've kind of done a quick overview this year. La Cuesta High School is an umbrella for a number of at-risk programs, and these include continuation high schools located on the Santa Barbara, San Marcos, and Dos Pueblos High School campuses, in addition to one located on the La Colina Junior High School campus. Each of these schools consists of two classrooms and two teachers. La Cuesta also includes a community day school, serving seventh and eighth grade students on the La Colina Junior High Campus, two high school independent study teachers on the Santa Barbara High Campus, an independent study teacher on the Dos Pueblos Campus, and three high school teachers in the middle college program house on the Santa Barbara City College Campus. So, we truly do have a number of alternative programs. All told, we enroll approximately two hundred and seventy-five high school-age students and up to thirty junior high-age students. We have a teaching staff of sixteen with two full-time academic counselors, serving what are classically called at-risk students. Our school-wide focus areas, always mindful that programs for at-risk students are dropout prevention programs, as well as academically focused programs, our school-wide goal has always been to increase academic achievement across the board, while also helping students to gain credits toward high school graduation. For the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year, using the district leap, the board focus goals, and the very real need to focus on passage of the exit exam, we've refined that goal to specifically address academic goals in English and reading, English language development, and mathematics. In addition, professional development and school climate goals to support the academic goals have also been put into place. The school climate goal is an expanded version of what we've been engaged in for the last several years. Over the course of the last five years, students and staff at La Cuesta have engaged in a process of community building. This has been done slowly over the course of time through the use of staff development and student activities. During the two thousand and five, two thousand and six school year, the entire school community was involved in a community building exercise with NCCJ that culminated in a set of four goal statements that we've based our school climate work on for this school year. Students sat as equal partners in this work, and as a result, have seen their voices have power. These goal statements will guide our five-year plan with a primary focus on the first two for this school year. The four goal statements are: La Cuesta is a respectful, safe, and productive learning environment. Students at La Cuesta work hard and take responsibility for their own education. La Cuesta students have a positive high school experience, equal opportunities to graduate, and to build a foundation for success in the real world. Students, teachers, administrators, members of the school board, parents, guardians, and support staff, all work together for the success of students. In addition to community building gained through this school-wide goal-setting process, the district supported the hiring of highly qualified teachers as defined by the No Child Left Behind Act, and La Cuesta now has certificated math science and English history teachers at each site. These teachers actively participate in the professional learning community concept and meet weekly to design curriculum, discuss common assessments, and create lessons that resonate with students who struggle to believe that they can be successful. As a staff, we are also using the AVID WICER, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, and Reading, and interactive notebook strategies across the curriculum in all core classes. A focused belief that these students can access and be successful in college will continue to be a school-wide effort from this year forward. Our barriers and our challenges remain the same as they've been in previous years. Our students have often been failed by the system, and it is our job to find a way to overcome the safety, climate, and academic barriers that they've encountered to make it possible for them to be successful students and adults. It is paramount to always keep in mind that for some of our students, school is the only constant and safe place in their lives. The professional learning community model has given us the opportunity and the impetus to examine our practice as it has not been examined before. New staff has brought energy to this process and is driving the effort to develop appropriate curriculum that addresses the standards while also addressing the needs of our particular student population. The energy and can-do attitude at La Cuesta this year is infectious and exciting. Teachers and students alike are challenged, and they're working to rise to that challenge. When we look at our data, our students, we know that our students continue to achieve poorly on standardized tests, scoring basic, below basic, and far below basic on the English Language Arts CSTs, eighty-five percent or more of the time for the past three years. The results for the Algebra I test is even worse, with students scoring proficient less than ten percent of the time in the last three years. However, on the exit exam, a test that has meaning to them personally and determines whether or not they receive a diploma at the end of their high school career, our students tend to do much better. Over the last several years, teachers have encouraged students to stay for tutorial sessions so they could study for the exit exam and also use their time to make up for credit deficiency. During the two thousand and five, two thousand and six school year, that tutorial session was made mandatory for all students who had not passed the exam. Last year's students, overall, had a sixty-one percent passing rate on the English Language Arts portion of the exit exam, and a sixty-two percent passing rate on the math portion of the exam. The chart on page thirty-one shows the increase in scores over time on the exit exam. The increases, I believe, are due to the mandatory tutorial preparation time. As a response to the increased exit exam scores and the community building and goal statement work that we did with students and staff, we've extended the mandatory school day this year and built the exit exam preparation period into the schedule. I expect better passage results on the exit exams for two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, as a result of an even more focused effort on the part of both students and staff. In addition to the testing piece in the exit exam, alternative schools in California also report results on the alternative schools accountability model, I always stumble over that word, or the ASAM. The ASAM results are found in your packet on pages thirty-two to thirty-seven, and show definite growth over time. Our efforts to increase attendance, decrease suspensions, and increase credit completion show in the commendable or sufficient range in almost all cases. This is a sign that students and staff are successfully reaching the goals that we set for student achievement in areas of behavior and performance that directly affect the positive outcomes for academic achievement. We have set SMART goals in English Language Development, Mathematics, Professional Development, Reading Language Arts, and School Climate. The academic goals are based specifically on the district leap and the board focus goals. Professional learning communities will identify essential standards, develop benchmark exams, examine data, monitor student work, create and use common rubrics, and use a common credit and grading system. Student work will be evaluated at each six-week grading period. Members of each of the professional learning communities will be responsible for monitoring the progress of each of the academic goals. The school climate goal involves outside agencies, field trips, college visits, and student leadership. Student and staff feedback will be used to evaluate the effectiveness of these activities. Our professional development plan is built in as one of our school-wide goals. It includes time for teachers to work together to create and develop curriculum as members of collaborative teams. It also includes the use of subject-specific and professional conferences and outside facilitators to assist teachers in creating and delivering standards-based curriculum in the most effective manner to this at-risk population. La Cuesta took a team of six to the AVID Conference in July, and once again is taking a team to the AVID Conference this coming July. The strategies that the teachers brought back from that experience are being used across all sites on a daily basis, and students are being coached and encouraged to consider college as a realistic option for their future. In addition, we have teachers that completed CLAD, High Point, math, and science courses, and other teachers that completed training in similar areas during the summer of two thousand and six. It's my goal as a leader to empower my teachers to be collaborators. It is critical when teachers are not, whoops, it is critical when teachers are not credentialed in each of the cores that they are required to teach, that they have someone to collaborate with. This year, with the professional learning community model and our new hires, we have a true team of teachers who are excited about the possibilities. They meet weekly to share and support each other. The weekly meetings are voluntary. Biweekly, I have them scheduled for meetings, so. They're creating curriculum that meets the needs of their very diverse population of learners, while still modeling the importance of learning and offering a role model for the love of learning itself. My role as a leader is to support my staff and ensure that we stay focused on our goals. If areas are identified where additional training is necessary to adequately address our goals, it's my responsibility our goals, it's my responsibility to facilitate that training. In addition to supporting my staff, biweekly scheduled meetings are coordinated by lead teachers where they support each other in their efforts to determine student achievement. When a student or a group of students does not achieve in one teacher's class, that teacher brings it to the group. There's always someone who has suggestions or another lesson, another approach, or an assessment for the teacher to try in order to ensure student learning. In addition, teachers monitor the credits that students earn at each of the six-week grading periods, passage rates and scores on the exit exam, and results of state and local testing. The site council agrees that La Cuesta's major focus has to be on student achievement, while also recognizing that unless the climate is conducive to learning, nothing can be accomplished. As a result, we chose to place our resources so that they support preparation for the exit exam, support for English learners, and support across the board for students in English and reading and mathematics. Site council members believe students need an opportunity to experience many of the things they somehow missed on a traditional campus, so there are ample funds set aside for field trips to colleges and for other student activities. Lastly, the council also felt it was critical for teachers to have access to quality staff development and conferences to stay current on best practices in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abney, and board members. I'm sure we have questions. We'll start with Ms. Arda.
Sure. Thanks, Ms. Abney. You went to six periods this year.
Yes.
And then two periods in addition to the six?
No.
A zero and a seven, or just a seventh?
No. No. Oh, okay, I'm with you. Community day school?
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a couple of different schedules. La Cuesta was a four-hour day and is now a five-hour day.
Right.
And six periods within the five hours.
Thank you, okay.
Community day school has a seven-period day.
Okay, it wasn't clear to me in the actual text.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. You said that you sent a team of six to the AVID conference this summer. Of the team, how many have, have all of them implemented AVID strategies in their classrooms?
Actually, one of the team was myself, one was our counselor, and one was our resource teacher who kind of helps facilitate around all, so three were actually academic teachers.
Okay.
And they brought that back to all of the sites.
Okay.
So it's actually the interactive notebooks and the AVID WICER strategies are being used on all of the continuation campuses in all of the core classrooms, English, history, math, and science. So the ones that went to the conference actually brought it back to their colleagues, did some inservicing in August for their colleagues, and we're using it on all the sites. And so now, some of the people that went last summer are going back again this summer, and some of the people that didn't get to go are going to go and get, you know, kind of get the official version of it.
Okay.
But we're actually using it on all campuses, and they're being nurtured by the folks that went last summer.
Okay, it's good to hear, because a lot of Title II money was spent on the AVID conference, and we went on a field trip, if you will, to Oxnard Hall.
Right.
Which is an AVID high school.
Right.
And it became really clear in conversations that took course, place over the course of the day that a number of teachers who went have never done anything about implementing or sharing. Other teachers who never, didn't have the opportunity to go are trying to do it, so I'm glad to hear that it's been a very consistent effort on your campus.
And at La Cuesta, right now, I mean, we're not doing the tutorial. We're using, we're using the writing across the curriculum strategies, and that's, and the interactive notebooks, which is the organizational tools and the writing tools.
Right.
Because realistically, the way, you know, the way we're, we're set up right now, and maybe even realistically at a point in the future, the tutorial classes might not be the best fit for our population. But for our population, the writing strategies and the inquiry strategies are perfect, and the interactive notebooks and the organizational skills are perfect strategies. Our students, who never could keep track of a piece of paper, are every day at the end of a class period putting them into these notebooks. They know exactly where their stuff is, they know exactly what scores they got on them. You know, if a teacher says to them, where is your, you know, your paper, your Shakespeare paper, or your, you know, your life science paper, they, it's in their table of contents, they can go get their interactive notebook. It is the most marvelous tool for kids who never got these organizational skills anywhere else, and so, you know, we're saying AVID for everybody at La Cuesta, because it really is working. And one of the teachers at community day school is also highly AVID-trained from Santa Maria, and so she actually uses it with her students there also.
Actually, you probably hit on, I think, the most critical skill that's taught throughout it, and we were in a lot of classrooms, and some implemented AVID strategies much more successfully than others, so that they've got their own kinks to work out. But the notebook organizational skills, that sort of thing, has clearly taken hold at Oxnard, and it sounds like it's a critical skill that you're trying to teach to your students.
Yeah, it's a beautiful thing to behold.
Yeah.
It's really, it's amazing, you know, and the kids can walk you through what they've learned by looking through this notebook.
Yeah.
It's pretty exciting.
Good, good, okay. The only, the only other question that I had has to do with the goals that you've stated. And this is just an example, because it's, you know, some version of it is repeated all the way through your plan. All students will reach high standards at a minimum, attaining proficiency or better by the year 2014. Students enrolled two semesters or more will improve by one level, and by one level you mean from basic to proficient or proficient to advanced?
Right, and I really struggled with how to phrase that and how to phrase it appropriately for a population of students in an open-entry, open-exit program.
And I think, I think what you did was really good, identifying students who have been with you for two semesters, because if they come and they go over the course of a semester, there's no possible way you can track them. But tell me how you keep track of those students you had for two-
We're gonna have to do it individually.
Do it by hand, okay, okay.
I do a lot of stuff by hand, but we'll have to do it individually, but, but I thought was this, the district LEAP goal is to 2014, all kids proficient by 2014. We gave some thought to 65% of the kids, 50% of the kids will be basic.
Okay, okay.
But we have so many kids that are far below basic, so if we look at the far below basic kid, and he's been with us for two semesters, and we can get him to below basic, then he's achieved, you know, one level improvement, but then we don't want to say that the basic kid shouldn't then also get to proficient in that same period of time. So we'll have to track them individually. I mean, each kid, we'll, we'll look at the kids that have been with us for two semesters, and then we'll look at their scores, and we'll have to do them individually.
Okay.
Which, that's just the way it'll have to be.
No, 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 it's just, it's just more or less, you know, from a purely personal standpoint, I scoff at the first goal, that all students will be proficient by 2014.
Right, I agree with you.
But I, I appreciate the fact that you want to be able to track students who have been with you for two semesters more, and, and then it was a question of how are you going to do that?
And we'll do that by hand, and we really didn't want to get into the bind of having to say that all kids will be, because we know realistically that it's going to be a struggle to even get some of our kids up one level, because again, this is not a test that they're going to take particularly seriously, whereas the exit exam will take much more seriously.
More seriously.
So, and we're thrilled about the successes that we're seeing on the exit exam over time, so I think we'll start seeing success with the CSTs once we can convince them that they really can do it.
Well, and they're so directly linked to the Casey.
Yeah.
Will you be working with Davis at all to find a way to report back what your two semester students are doing on the CST?
I absolutely will be working with them.
Okay.
I think once we get Aries, it might be easier to track.
Okay.
I, everything I've seen in Aries, I, I know there's a lot of things that will be easier to look up, so hopefully that will be also, and if not, I'll go through them one by one, which is I've done on other occasions for other data, so.
Great. That was, those were really my two big questions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I didn't actually have any questions. I thought you did a very thorough job. I was trying to follow along your presentation, realizing that that wasn't all in the same spot in the-
I was going by the executive summary outline that I was given, sorry about that.
That's okay. No, I appreciate that. It makes you focus on you rather than flipping through pages while you're listening. And I just want to thank you for, because I know you have a challenge with your student population, especially because they're not with you very long, some of them, so just, since this is my last single-plan presentation as a board member, I wanted to-
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to say that, but.
I said it for you.
And I appreciate the challenges that all of you face, and I think your challenges are a little unique just because of your varied population and, you know, watching, watching over the years, the kids, and I've been to several of your graduations, and it's, they're different. We can't look at your program in the same way that we look at the comprehensive high schools, and so I tend to look at it more from the, I don't want to say humanitarian point of view, but just the work that you're doing with the kids and how many success stories have come out of the school. And it is frustrating, I'm sure, that your test scores do not rise to the level that you'd like to see them, but you've also got challenges that, that other schools don't face, and they, many of them go back to the traditional high school and do well, so.
Exactly.
I just wanted to thank you for your, all the work that you do, and I think having junior high and high school kids spread across all the campuses that you have is a tremendous challenge, and whatever ends up happening with your facilities, which hopefully will improve a little bit for your situation, I applaud your efforts.
Thank you.
And appreciate your-
We have great kids, and I, and I appreciate you mentioning the graduations, because if you haven't been to our graduations, they are absolutely tear-jerkers, so it's, it's a marvelous thing to see kids, and again, I think this focus on the college pieces is going to really be a booster for our kids too, and that's, we came away from the AVID conference with that too, and we've got college banners in our classrooms and, and are really trying to push the college focus, because these really, these kids really do have the possibility to go to college, and that's the other piece that I think that, that we've maybe been missing. We all kind of knew it, but we hadn't been celebrating it, so, so thank you for reminding me again that we've got great kids, so.
And I'm sorry for the loss of your student, and I hope that-
Yeah, thanks.
The kids can work through that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's always hard.
Yeah, we've mentioned briefly this challenge of having facilities at different schools, and it's not getting easier, I imagine, but I did want to mention, your math scores in particular just jumped way up. Is there anything you want to say about that?
On the exit exam?
Yeah, on the Casey.
I just, you know, I'm just, I'm firmly convinced that, that making kids go to a tutorial session if they hadn't passed the exit exam bore fruit. I mean, we went from, what was the, the year before score, and I know I've got those in here.
It was a huge jump, yeah.
It was like, yeah, they, I mean, they both-
They're both drawn.
I know I've got that chart in here, it's right here. I mean, we went from-
Forty-one, maybe, to sixty-one?
I actually have the numbers, but I can't, okay. So we went from forty and a half percent in math to sixty-two percent in math, so we went twenty percentage points, and we went from forty-six point seven percent to sixty-one percent. And I'm firmly convinced that, you know, putting, probably saying putting a gun to their head is not the most PC thing, but, you know, we really did, we focused and we were firm, and we said they had to, they had to be in the tutorial sessions, and, and we've now built that into our schedule, so we, you know, we extended our school day by an hour, we actually built that into the school day. So now they're either in Casey prep or they're in credit recovery, and so, you know, every kid that we have is behind on credits, and so if they have passed the exit exam, then they're in the other classroom, so two days a week they do English Language Arts, and two days a week they do math. So if they have passed the exit exam, then they're in the other teacher's class, working on whatever classes they still need units in to get caught up so that they can be on track to graduate. So it's actually built into the school day on most campuses, it's fifth period. On one campus that has, you know, most difficulty with busing, it's first period, because we do have some kids that have trouble getting to school, you know, on that particular campus, but we've built it into the school day, and so there's, you know, it's not, well, I have to leave to go to work, or I have to leave to go to ROP, so I, I believe our scores are going to be higher this next year. I, I set a, I set a challenge of 75%, and I, you know, I think that, and that's across, that's across all kids, obviously we want all of our seniors to pass, but that's 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders, and I believe it's because we told them they had to be there, and they believed us, so.
Well, it sounds like they're motivated to want to graduate.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's important, yeah.
Absolutely.
I just want to go back to AVID, I was going to also ask about that, and I just, there's the, the portion of it we saw in these classes, not just the tutorial, but the, the portion where they teach about, they have actual lesson plans, and I was wondering if you implement those at all?
I, on some of the campuses, they are using, I believe they are using some of the lesson plans. I know I had two teachers who went to the science portion, and a teacher who went to the English portion, and I brought back a history book, so I know some of the lessons from the AVID strategies. Part of the, the WICER, the Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, and Reading strategies come from the actual lesson books, so yes, those are being used, you know, across the campuses. That's part of what the WICER strategies are, is the subject-specific books, so yeah, those are also being used in the classrooms along with, you know, whatever the, the subject matter is.
And lastly, is NCCJ continues to work with your campus?
We are continuing to work with them, yes, and in fact, our students are going to be doing a talking in class, a three-day leadership piece in January, and we are continuing to work with them, and we will, you know, yeah, I see that as a five-year plan, you know, to really kind of institutionalize it, and then it'll be a part of, you know, a part of the institution, and then we can, we can grow it from there, but yes.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm hoping this is on. I'm fiddling with it and wondering what it's doing. Again, thank you, and also my condolences on the loss of your student and to the larger community at your school. I just had a very quick question, sort of carried over from, from last year's report. You, last year, you touched on a lot of the same things that you're touching on today, and including the issue of the site, which you brought up last year, which I think we're kind of trying to-
I'm trying to behave myself tonight, I didn't say anything else.
No, no, you, sorry, you didn't bring that up, we did.
I was a good girl.
Yes, you were. Yes, you were. But the one question that I had about, that was carryover from last year, because it seemed like a lot of the things that you are focusing on have actually improved, was that you said there was no bilingual support last year, and I was looking through the plan to see if it seemed like any of that had changed, and I couldn't really find it.
You know, we, we don't specifically have bilingual support, but what we are doing is, we have SADI-trained teachers, we have several teachers who finished their CLAD over the summer, we are, we do, we, we wrote ELD goals this year. Last year's goals were improved student achievement across the board, and then specifically in reading and math, and so we broke out all of our goals this year and went very specifically, and our ELD goals really specifically focus on, you know, breaking it out and differentiating the instruction and making sure that, you know, we slow things down or that we present it in a way that is more appropriate. None of our students are monolingual. All of our students test at four or five on the CELT. Now, that doesn't mean that they're all completely proficient in English by any means. Many of our students probably should be reclassified, but they can't be reclassified because they got the four or the five on the CELT, but they're with us, so they didn't do the academic piece. So from a bilingual support standpoint, no, we don't have that, but we do have SADI-trained teachers, CLAD-trained teachers, teachers that are differentiating the instruction for those students that might not have the language pieces. And the kids that we found last year that maybe didn't pass the English Language Arts portion of the exit exam, that were second language learners, those kids are the ones that we're really focusing on to make sure that they have the English piece and the writing piece so that they can pass the exit exam.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because that was actually my concern with those students, particularly for the exit exam.
So our focus is, is that direction, so that, you know, it's not a bilingual support in that sense, but it's a recognition of the fact that, that English is not their first language, and a recognition of the fact that, that we do need to tailor instructions for those specific students that are still listed as second language learners, so that we, you know, that we know who they are, that we, that we make sure that they're not falling through the cracks in, in our small system, and that when we're working with them in, in tutorial, if they have not, in the Casey prep, that, that they actually get the specific instruction that, you know, that will meet those needs. And we also have purchased a, it's a, a current events kind of curriculum, it's called What's Happening, and it's written at two different reading levels, fifth grade and eighth grade, I think, and so for kids that have more difficulty reading, they, they can have, they're doing the same, it's exactly the same, but the teacher can hand it, you know, to the kid that maybe struggles with, with the vocabulary a little bit, it looks exactly the same, but maybe the words are a little bit easier and that, and you know, but they can still have a class, you know, discussion, and all of the English teachers are using that. They were doing a lesson on Darfur the other day, and, you know, and yeah, pretty deep in, but, but a rich discussion around, you know, why isn't the world doing anything? And, you know, there were some second language learners in that class, but, you know, they were getting the same curriculum with a little bit easier focus, and then, you know, the teacher was available if, if there were still questions. So I think it's being addressed pretty appropriately on all the classes by the, by the English teachers, who all are, are trained to do- teachers who all are are trained to do that now.
And you have those on all sites?
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Well, see, the exciting thing this year is with district support, every single site has a teacher that's credentialed or housed under NCLB and there's a teacher that is a math and science expert and a teacher that's an English and history expert. So we've got full core credentialing in in those in those subjects, which we didn't have prior to this year. So the district really supported us in making that happen. So the curriculum is much richer, much more focused, much more appropriate on all the campuses and there's direct instruction going on with the interactive notebooks and I mean, it's just it's it's a whole new school and it's a very, very exciting thing going on out at La Cuesta this year, so.
Well, I thank you for that answer. That actually addressed the concern that I had and thank you to the district administrators who are giving Ms. Abney that support because that I think is important.
Yeah, it's it's been marvelous.
Thank you.
Mrs. Abney has come staff members here, I think. I don't know if she was.
And two, my staff came to support me, yes.
Would you would you like to introduce them?
Sure. Dr. Paul Cronshaw, who is the head teacher at our Los Alturas campus and Ms. Janet Good, who is his teaching partner from Los Alturas also. So Janet's one of our new hires. She's the English History teacher there and Paul is the Math Science teacher at Los Alturas.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you taking the time to come and support your principal and we also hope that you feel the support from the district as well. And we definitely appreciate having teachers come. Thank you. Okay, well, with that, I think we can let you off the hot seat now and we will actually take a a short break before we resume. Thank you. We'll resume our single-site presentations and I managed to have lost my agenda. Here it is.
We'll just go to Jan Zettel.
We'll just go to Jan Zettel. When in doubt, call on Jan Zettel. And he will introduce the principal for Dos Pueblos High School.
Thank you, Ms. Cordero. I'm very pleased tonight to before I introduce the principal, very pleased tonight to introduce the district team. You saw Mr. Gonzalez sitting in the back and Dr. Cynthia White and together with our principals, you all have to know that it takes a team, just like it takes a community to build schools. It takes a team and you're going to be hearing tonight and you've heard from Kathy already about professional learning communities, about AVID. You'll also hear about the LEAP plan and and the English Language Arts and Mathematics changes that are going on and the focus that's going on. And I just want to reiterate when you hear that, it is a theme and it's something we're very glad to to have listened to the staff about to provided to provide those kinds of things that they're saying that they need and and just coincidentally, it's research-based and we're very glad to do that. And so I'm very glad to bring you a brand-new star in the in the heavens. Mark Swanett comes to us very well recommended. They were very angry that we stole him out of the Sacramento area. They are missing him right now and we're glad to have him. Mark, Dos Pueblos High School.
Wow, I feel like I should be accepting Academy Award or something with that kind of lead in. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here and present to you, not knowing exactly what to prepare for and never having sat through a single plan presentation in this district. I followed the template that I was given and I intended to keep it short and sweet and leave time for questions at the end.
One, two, nine.
I'll start off by saying that that Dos Pueblos is a school of twenty-three hundred students. We have approximately ninety-two teachers and over sixty, if not seventy, support staff members, so we are very definitely a small city. And so we have a lot of areas of focus and a lot of strengths and a lot of barriers and challenges that we are presented with. I'd like to highlight, first of all, some of those strengths. I'd like to say first and foremost that I think I have a fantastic staff. They are highly collaborative, very professional. They go over and above what they have to do. They are student-centered and very focused on doing what's right for kids. We have a number of academic support programs. We have AIM program for math remediation, the BES program for English remediation, AVID, Excel. We have after-school and lunchtime tutoring offered by all of our teacher, many of our teachers. Another strength that we have is a strong culture of diversity. I've heard this many times since coming to the district and I've tried to figure out exactly why it is, but we have a a very open and accepting student body and faculty. When you walk on our campus, it's unlike any campus I've ever spent time on. It's very not clique-ish and not segregated. You don't see a lot of grouping up of kids by one thing or another, whether it's the way they dress or the color of their skin. They're just all mingled together and they blend and they all know each other and they're all having a good time. And so it's a very, very unique feeling and I think that's one of our greatest strengths. It's also reflected in the fact that we're able to have, by setting those issues aside, high-level dialogue in the classrooms, high-level instruction, and just a very strong spirit of strong charger spirit. We have a very, very strong and active parent community. I think that's probably true of the whole Santa Barbara area, but I am thrilled to have strong organizations like our PTSA and our ELAC. The parents who are represented on my school site council are fantastic individuals. We have great boosters organizations, so we have all of the pieces. We have everything that we need, great kids, great students, great parents, soon-to-be great and finished, I hope, facilities. But we've got everything going for us. We do have, you know, those barriers and challenges that I've already even heard mentioned tonight. The first and foremost in my mind is the lack of staff development time built into the contract and into the school year, whether that come in the form of early release days, late start days, whatnot. It's crucial. I've given over all of my staff meetings, so I get all of about forty-five minutes to an hour a month with my staff for staff development, which is nowhere near enough time to try and affect the kinds of changes that I would like to affect. So that's one barrier that I see as a major one. I said, I do have teachers who are very collaborative, very cooperative, very willing to give of their time, but in with the current state of negotiations, they are certainly not formally working to rule, but they don't like the idea of banked minutes because the way they view it is that then they don't get compensated for the time that they have to stay for the staff development. So while I think that they support me and they support anything that I would like to try and do at the present moment, they're not interested in doing anything that they feel would they would not be compensated for, I guess. My facilities are a third barrier and challenge to some of our our programs. We have every single classroom full and for many of those classrooms, it's many periods of the day with traveling teachers. I don't have at all now room to expand or grow new programs. I will have a little bit of new space coming when the when theater building gets finished, but that lack of physical space and the fact that some teachers have to travel and that we don't have that ability to grow and implement new programs, which might require specialized kinds of spaces, is a challenge to some of the things that I would like to accomplish.
Mark, as I recall, we have three classrooms in the theater.
It's a really interesting question. It's gone back and forth. As I understand it, back in the design phases when they had to scale it back.
Yes.
There was originally a band room, drama room, and choir room. On the current drawings that I have in my office, it just shows the choir and the band room. I went on a tour of the facility recently, though, and I saw those two spaces in there and very clearly, you know, girded out with studs. I did not see the third classroom, but the guy who was taking us on the tour mentioned that there was a third classroom, so I've asked Larry Vrenish to give me some clarification.
I believe it is three. And we'll be scheduling a board field trip of the construction projects at each of the high schools, so we'll pick a morning and run through each of the high schools sometime very soon.
Yeah, and it's a thrill to actually be in that hollow shell of what will be a beautiful theater building. You really get a sense of the the scope of it and it's a really neat facility, so. Returning to our single plan, I've chosen to focus on three areas of focus and these are not going to match perfectly what you have in your plan because I've tried to sort of put some things that were several items in the plan under one heading so that I could address more things in the plan in a more concise way. First of all, meeting all of our state and federal accountability measures, including those school-wide targets and targets for individual subgroups is a priority of ours. Improving our overall academic performance and language acquisition for EL students, another goal of ours, both aligning with the board focus goals, and improving student competency in the core four academic subjects, math, English, social science, and science, with particular emphasis this year on math and English and those skills in English in particular, which translate to all areas of the curriculum and that primarily being literacy at this point. In looking over our data, began with an assessment of our adequate yearly progress, our AYP in two thousand five, two thousand six. I'm proud to report that we met all of our AYP goals and that all of our statistically significant subgroups also met theirs, which is part of that. Our academic performance index, we did we failed to meet our API growth goals for this year and that's the second year in a row that that has happened. It was our school-wide, our our API dropped fourteen points from seven ninety-eight to seven eighty-four. Of our statistically significant subgroups, I'm pleased to report that we had growth from our Asian population. They went up three points. And Davis, maybe you can tell me about this. Our socioeconomically disadvantaged students went up one hundred and seventeen points. There was a discussion that that was not accurate. It's still being reported that way on CDA's website as of today, so would you like to tell us? Maybe you could clarify for me.
This is the same for all the high schools and actually for the middle schools too. We went over this. The student-parent ed level was reported wrong. It wasn't transposed properly and so that data is gonna be coming. We've already done the corrections, so you'll see a corrected version of that in either in the January, beginning of February. So it's just nothing we can do about it right now, but just to leave it the way it is blank, basically.
Okay. And that's why I thought maybe that since I knew that Davis had made the corrections, I was hoping that those corrections had been made on the CDU website, but when I checked today, it still said plus one seventeen, which I would love to to stay with if we could just do that for the time being. Our English learners actually did go up sixty-one points, which was a great accomplishment. Failing to meet our growth targets, however, were the Hispanic Latino students who dropped by eight points. Our students with disabilities whose API dropped by thirty-five points. And our largest drop, although they still met their growth target because they maintained an API of over a hundred, came from our white students. Excuse me, not our largest drop, but one of our most significant drops and they went down twenty-five points. California high school exit exam results, considering all administrations of the KC in two thousand five, two thousand six, the percent of students passing in both the English Language Arts and math sections dropped schoolwide. In oh four, oh five, eighty-one percent of all students passed the English Language Arts portion of the exam in oh five, oh six, seventy-six percent of all students passed. Of particular concern are the Hispanic or Latino students, only fifty-six percent of whom passed English Language Arts in two thousand six. That was a three-point drop from their scores in two thousand and five. In oh four, oh five, eighty-one percent of all students passed the math portion. In oh five, oh six, seventy-nine percent of all students passed. And although improved over two thousand and five, still of concern are the Hispanic or Latino students, only sixty-three percent of whom passed math in two thousand and six, which was up two points from two thousand and five, but not enough points in my opinion. The California English Language Development Test, our CELT results in oh five, oh six, seventy-six point three percent of DP. English learners advanced one proficiency level on the CELT, thirty-seven point seven percent of EL students attained English proficiency. And as far as participation in advanced courses go, enrollment in AP and GATE classes increased at Dos Pueblos High School in oh five, oh six. When you look at the raw numbers, our overall raw numbers of Latino, white, and all others increased. Advanced course enrollment, however, does not mirror the overall school demographics. In particular, while DP student population is thirty-one percent Latino, only ten point one percent and twelve percent of GATE and AP students respectively are Latino. Conversely, while fifty-seven percent of DP student population is white, seventy-five point eight and seventy-two point seven percent of GATE and AP students respectively are white, which gives us a mandate to try and improve those numbers. So I'd like to talk about just three of our goals and again, they're sort of rolled into a package to sort of address English learners and all students at large in particular together. That first goal that I mentioned about meeting all state and federal accountability measures, including school-wide targets and targets for individual subgroups. We started with the the goal of saying, you know, we want to meet those those state and federal accountability measures and those bars are set far lower than we're currently achieving. But the way the goal was written was to make sure that we meet those measures so that we do not get put into program improvement. And so at least the minimum required percentage, which is twenty point nine percent of all students, including all individually identifiable subgroups, will meet federal NCLB AYP by demonstrating proficiency, which is a score of three eighty or above in mathematics as measured by the high school exit exam. Some of the things that we're trying to do to support those students to get them to that point. And by the way, because of my site council and I have discussed this sort of at length and by setting these goals here for the purposes of initial planning and starting, because this is a living document and we'll be revisiting it at each of our site council meetings and updating it and changing it as we see fit, we left ourselves, we started at that baseline point, leaving ourselves the opportunity to raise those percentage targets as the year went on, as we saw fit. One of the things that we want to do is to continue to provide standards-based skill betting, skill-building mathematics instruction to students who have taken and not passed the math portion of the high school exit exam. That comes in the form of our AIM Achievement in Mathematics classes. We'd like to provide supplementary math tutoring for we are currently and would like to continue providing supplementary math tutoring for limited English proficient and at-risk students through our Excel program, a two-period standards-based academic environment, and provide comprehensive data analysis services to all teachers. And that may include student performance data as well as researching effective programs, instructional strategies, and assessment methods to help improve student performance and services delivered to students. This is a new funding for us this year. It's a position that we've we've taken and given to a teacher. It's two periods a day for her to coordinate data for teachers. There's not enough time to be able to get all those things to people and it's critical that they have the information that they need and have it in a timely way. I am pleased to say, you've actually met Amy. She came and presented to you when we were talking about Edgiosoft and she went to the training along with me the other day, the initial training for Edgiosoft, and she can barely sit still waiting for it all to get completely uploaded and let her get running with it because there's so many powerful things that she can do with it and I think it's going to significantly impact instruction and teaching and learning at my school. So that was all talking about math. I'd like to also have a similar goal that says that all at least the minimum required percentage, which is twenty-two point three percent of all students, including all individually identifiable subgroups, will meet federal NCLB AYP by demonstrating proficiency, which is a score of three eighty or above, in English Language Arts as measured by the high school exit exam. Doing the same things in different ways, we're also providing standards-based, skill-based English instruction for students who've taken and not passed the English portion of the exit exam. We would like we are providing supplementary English tutoring for limited English proficient students and at-risk students in that Excel standards-based academic environment. And we're also providing the same kinds of data analysis services to those programs so that they have current and timely information. Second accountability measure that we want to make sure that we meet this year, especially since we have not met it for the past two years, is to make sure that our school-wide API increases appropriately to meet the annual state-defined growth target. Typically, that's five percent of the distance from your current API to eight hundred with a minimum score of one. Next year, the minimum score is five. So because we are as close as we are to eight hundred, we're going to have a target of growth target of five for oh six, oh seven, and my goal is that we meet that. We're increasing the quantity and quality of instructional materials and technology that will aid in student mastery of academic standards across all subjects. Having teachers collaborate to align curricula, instructional materials, and assessment to California State Content Standards across the curriculum. That also plays very nicely into Edgiosoft. We're providing academic counseling and support to summer school students, especially remedial and at-risk summer school students, making sure that they're getting the services they need, remediation, and staying on track for graduation. We look at the AVID program, even though it's in its infancy, as a tool for school-wide change and for bringing better instruction to the classroom, better services to the kids. And so one of my tasks is for AVID teachers to participate in relevant staff development to improve knowledge implementation of AVID methods and strategies. Also make sure that those AVID teachers have all of the necessary curriculum from AVID Center in San Diego that they need to be able to to have the full range of opportunities available for kids and also. And also make sure that my REACH teachers, who are the precursors, as you know, to AVID or even the successors to originally to AVID, I guess, it's all circular, but to make sure that those teachers, because we're phasing out that program, still continue to have the materials that they need to make it through when we, our final transition to AVID. And then I think it's critical that we have effective communication of information from school to home for all stakeholders, including at-risk and limited English proficient students via email, mail, and telecommunications. By telecommunications, one of the things that I'm referring to, that may not really be the appropriate word, is the headset translators. One of my sort of missions this year is to minimize the number of separate meetings that we have for English speakers and Spanish speakers, and try to have everything in joint meetings. We had a very successful, if I may get on my soapbox for a minute, very successful presentation by Sandra Brown of the Sheriff's Department on methamphetamines at our campus a couple of weeks ago. And our PTSA was very, very gracious in reaching out towards our Spanish-speaking community, made sure that we had translators there, made sure that we had headsets, made sure that we had other things that we knew that they would need, including childcare, and apparently a kermis, which is sort of a potluck. And that we had a huge turnout of our Spanish speakers, and we felt very good about the fact that they were there and participating as part of our overall student population and not a separate unit. Like to improve the overall academic performance and language acquisition for EL students. We'll measure that by English learners making appropriate annual progress in their acquisition of English languages measured by the CELT, so they'll be, we're looking for them to continue to improve by one year, per year, and we'd like to improve the number, the percentage of students who are getting reclassified at the high school level. And one of the key mechanisms that we have for this is a position of our homeschool liaison in Linda Guarania, who is a huge part of keeping the EL program together and communicating with the parent community about what's going on. Providing access for staff to relevant staff development for EL teachers and providing necessary instructional and supplemental materials for EL classrooms are also under that goal. And then in terms of improving student competency in the Core Four academic subjects, with in particular, with particular emphasis on math and English, we'll be doing, using the Edgesoft for local assessments, also using statewide assessments in both the forms of the KC and the STAR CSTs. One of the ways that we're going to try to make improvements is through a whole bunch of grade level and course-alike teaming. I've got really strong programs going right now in both my math and science, and English departments, in terms of grade level and course-alike teaming and common unit planning and common assessments, and it's fantastic to see, and it will be even more exciting to see with the Edgesoft being able to actually give them back real data. The, I also would like to mention that my science department is really getting on board, and I do have elements of my social science department who are getting on board, too. Those are all what we call PLCs. As you know, the professional learning communities. They're not all being officially run through Mr. Zettel's office as PLCs, because many of my teachers have families and other commitments and can't meet outside the school day, so they actually give up their lunches to meet and do this kind of collaboration. We're also providing release time for English teachers to articulate between grades and with feeder middle schools. We're going to establish and appropriately train a literacy team to implement literacy coaching and instruction across the curriculum, and we see that as being a critical piece to try to improve overall, all of our, all of our Core Four academic areas and other areas as well. And then critical also is that we're going to be purchasing a reading assessment and using it with all incoming freshmen to gather information about them, and we're also researching with the Edgesoft people about how to get this information into their program. But every incoming freshman and every student new to our school will take, at the moment it looks like it's going to be the Gates McGinnity Reading Assessment Program, and have that data loaded up so the teachers have access to it. And then we'll be doing some periodic retesting to see if they're making adequate improvement in reading and literacy. The PLCs are critical to our professional development. They're in place for, like I said, all the grade-level English courses and the course-alike math classes, and also some in social science and science. Staff meetings, as I mentioned earlier, are about my only time for professional development during the course of the school year. We have a couple of days at the beginning of the year, but now that we're up and running, staff meetings are my opportunities to talk to them, and we have many things to cover. In staff development, we've talked about all of our school goals. We've talked about our WASC revisit for this spring. We've had meetings where we discuss the AVID strategies and methodologies and new technology rollouts, and those are just some of the things that we've tried to cram into very limited staff development time in the form of staff meetings. And we've also set aside money, of course, for conferences and workshops, and that money will be set aside to pay for staff to attend these conferences and workshops, and requests are going to be granted based on, of course, their relevance to our site plan. The last item on my agenda here was school leadership. And one of the things that you would ask, that I discussed, was my role as principal and how I'm aware of what's going on and how we're monitoring and improving instruction. I would just like to say I visit the classroom, visit classrooms almost daily. I talk to teachers every day. I observe students all the time. I rely on state and local assessment data to help coach teachers in modifying instruction to meet student needs. And when we have Edgesoft, that will be a powerful tool in meeting and coaching with coaching teachers as well. One thing that I think is really critical is that I work hard to raise teacher expectations of students and to get teachers to communicate these expectations to the students. You know, having a rigorous program and telling kids that they can do it will very often lead to kids doing it and improving overall instruction. So I'm constantly talking about that with staff. And then, this is going to sound redundant, but I'll just say them again, because I know I've been sort of on this Edgesoft high horse, but how do teachers, leaders, teachers monitor student achievement? They, they use the course-alike and teaming, the PLCs, quite regularly, and then Edgesoft will be a very powerful tool for them as well, as it is fully implemented. That concludes my presentation. If it pleases you, I'll take questions now.
Thank you. Congratulations on your first presentation. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. I didn't go too fast, did I? I felt like I was talking a mile a minute.
No, no, it was quite appropriate. Thank you. Ms. Malakoff, would you like to start?
Thank you. You started off with saying, and you ended this way, about the barriers. One of the barriers was that there wasn't enough time for staff development, and you talked about a little bit about what things you had done. I'm just curious, if you had more time, what kind of staff development would you like to do?
Well, I think that if we had, if I could develop a year-long plan for staff development, meaning that we had some really dedicated time, a couple of hours, a couple of times a month at least, I would like to really focus in on, you know, standards-based instruction, good lesson design, and how to deliver good standards-based instruction, really get the teachers involved in looking at the data. It's one thing to hand a teacher a packet of information that talks about, you know, these are how your kids are doing, but to have, actually have time for kids, teachers to sit down together and look at that data and talk about it, and even have, you know, a coach in the room to help them understand what they're looking at. I think that would be critical also. Designing lessons, common unit assessments, common assessments, they're doing all of that on basically their own dime, their own time right now. And I'd like to be able to get a more focused effort and be able to have, you know, staff-wide people working on those things all at the same time, and be able to go and visit with the different groups and try and, and really work and coach them with it.
So I was thinking, even like, the beginning of the year, they have the district, the one day the district provides. What kind of thing, is there some kind of staff development that you would see that would be the most helpful?
Well, this year, what we, what we spent that, that day of staff development on was our WASC revisit. That was sort of a critical need for me to find out what had been done, what the staff felt still needed to be done this school year, given that we have a revisit, or a revisit coming up in the springtime. If, you know, in another year, if I had also built-in staff development throughout the course of the year, what I would really like to do is have that be the kickoff day of whatever the theme for the year was going to be, what our major focus was going to be, whether that was going to be, you know, explicit direct instruction, or whether it was going to be reading data, or whether it was going to be norming assessment assignments, whatever the goal was for the year. Because I really can't do, what's really difficult about having staff film it the way that I have it now, which is an hour a month, basically, is that it's really just hit or miss. It's little individual bits and pieces. It's what's relevant at the time, you know? I kind of promised them at the beginning of the year that I wouldn't spend, you know, an hour of their time every month on administrative and things that could be distributed by email and memos and boxes, that we would use that time to be really productive and at least learn something collectively as a group, some professional learning. But it's still, it tends to become whatever's timely. If it's, we've got areas coming up, we're going to probably have to spend a staff meeting talking about the areas rollout and that, how to work it and how to manage it. Edgesoft is going to be a topic at the time. Like I said before, we had the WASC revisit. When we came back from AVID this summer, we wanted to make sure that everybody knew what we were doing with AVID. So it's sort of, you know, it's not, if we had a more developed staff development time built in, then there would be a theme, there would be a kickoff day in the fall. This is what we're doing, this is get everybody on the same board, get a few steps behind us, and then have, you know, ongoing lessons sort of designed after good teaching.
Sounds good. Well, I hope Edgesoft turns out to be everything that you want it to be. Certainly, you know, we have no way of knowing sometimes, at least from my point of view, it's, you don't know how much it's wanted or needed, and I'm glad to see that it seems like something that'll be useful.
Teachers are actually, just in, you know, my experience, in about the last six to eight years, teachers were very resistant to looking at data and wanting to see what, how they were doing compared to other people and that sort of thing. In the last six to eight years, it's really been my experience, teachers are clamoring for this, and it's just not possible to get it into their hands in such a timely fashion. It looks like with Edgesoft, if it performs as expected, that that's going to, that's going to be something that they can do instantaneously from their desktop and within departments. And I think it's just going to be a very powerful tool.
I hope so. Thank you.
This is really, it's a question for all three high school principals, and it's, it's not, I'm trying to think of a really diplomatic way to put it, but there really isn't. When you get to secondary school and you ask for teacher volunteers, staff volunteers to, you know, be on site council, very often the people who volunteer are the people who are most concerned about the funding for their particular fiefdom. And I don't mean that in a nasty way, it's just a old word. And particularly as a new principal, I mean, you, you had less control over that. And I really want to compliment you for sitting down and taking ownership of everything that took place at DP up till now, because, you know, the scores that you're reporting weren't the scores when you were there as a principal. So a compliment to you that, that you are the educational leader.
It's my school.
But I, I don't know if there's a way to comprise site councils in any other way except to take those volunteers. But very often, they're stacked. I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to wait in on this conversation. Maybe it's, it's too uncomfortable, but it certainly seemed that way at DP to me this year. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but, I mean, you know that I know the staff at DP. I've had a lot of years on that campus.
Sure. Well, I will say this, that I initially, in my initial call for nominations for teacher representatives to the site council, I did not get many. And I didn't go out and twist anybody's arm in particular, I just sent out several more messages saying, look, nobody's stepping up, and we need to have representation.
Right.
And then I did begin to see little factions pulling together and pushing forward their candidate. But I thought it was a pretty fair election in that we had over 10 teachers for the positions that were on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
And the ones that won were the clear winners from the staff at large, so, I mean, it was, there was, it was not, it was not like a close race. So, you know, I had 10 candidates, but the ones that won, won by a large margin. So I felt like it was probably they were representing the, they, they were putting themselves forward or being pushed forward by their departments to represent their own interests to a certain extent, but I felt that they, the ones that were selected are actually selected by the campus at large, so I feel pretty good that they are representative of the faculty's views.
Oh, good. Well, and very often, I mean, I think you can get a lot of savvy parents onto a site council as well, and they make their own decisions. They're not pushed around by, you know, people who have particular agendas or whatever. With regard to your site plan, it's signed by the chair, but the chair is not listed.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out to you. You might want to add her name to it.
That's a good, actually, you know why?
Or is that last year's site chair?
No, that is, that is this year's site chair, and let me explain what happened. We had some errors in our bylaws with regard to site membership. So when the parents conducted their election, they brought back one too many candidate, or one too many people. And Kathleen, in fact, decided that she would step down and stay on as a non-voting member, and the council decided that even as a non-voting member, she could still chair the committee.
Okay, well, that was, that was a nice way to work it out. Okay, some particular questions. You've, you have made the decision to have a data analyst. It sounds like you've released Ms. Wolfslau for two periods a day to be your, your data analyst. And I know that you have less Title I money than the other schools, so very often it's hard to, you know, purchase that kind of time or put together a position like that. But it sounds like maybe it's an evolution toward what the other two high schools have done with having Title I coordinators.
Correct.
And it sounds like a push in that direction. And I guess I would encourage the push because it means that whoever this person is can look not only at CST and KC data, but they can start to analyze grades, you know, course grades, for instance, for English learners or whatever particular group you want to try and, and isolate. So I think it's a great move, and hopefully it will...
And even more, to lend even more weight to what you're talking about, she's also our EL department chair, so she does do a lot of that crossover.
Right, right.
Title I, looking at the EL kids.
But it's nice if somebody has the time to be looking at multiple measures, not just...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. We're on the same page. Here's, I was really thrown off by this, and I'm glad that you said it in your presentation, but in many cases, the numeric goals that are expressed, the schools have far exceeded them.
Correct.
Was that something that was dictated by the, the template, or...
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, okay.
It wasn't that. As I, in particular, I think you're talking about my goals having to do with the AYP.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that it is so critical that we, that we continue to meet our AYP, that it deserves to be a goal in and of itself, and that does not necessarily imply that it needs to be, that we need to keep improving that. We just need to make sure that we continue to meet it. We never want to drop out of, out of meeting it and being out of AYP compliance. As far as, as far as the low goals, though, I also said, as a council, we discussed it, I put that to them. I said, this is the minimum goal. Would we, should we, should we raise it? Do you guys want to raise it now? Do we want to shoot for, you know, higher than where we are? Do we want to shoot for, you know, at least 50% instead of 20.9, or, you know, whatever? And they said that they wanted to, since we are going to be doing periodic local assessments throughout the course of the year, that we, they, they would prefer to keep it low and see how it goes, and we can always raise targets up as we go.
Okay, okay.
So it was a conscious decision, and it was basically rooted in the fact that we think that it is absolutely critical that we continue to meet our AYP. That's first and foremost. We're looking at improvement in math and science competencies using other measures.
Okay. Thank you for, for that clarification. I had a couple of questions about expenditures.
Okay.
And I, I know that this is a problem that's plagued high schools, particularly with certain kinds of categorical funds and where expenditures have been placed. You have a reader for the English department, and it was categorized under Title II Part A on Teacher and Principal Training and Recruiting.
What page is that?
I'm on page 23. It's not a big expense, but is that, it's really teacher support. I mean, is it, so is it a legitimate Title II expense? Nobody has to answer.
Yeah, no, 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 I hear, I hear your question. And to be honest with you, I don't remember why I put it under Title II at the moment, other than it gave, you're right, it is teacher support. I, maybe, maybe my rationale at the time. I'll be perfectly honest, I don't remember the exact rationale.
We'll take a look at it, and we'll work with you on it.
Yeah, okay.
Since this is a dynamic document...
Exactly, exactly. That may not be the appropriate place for it, but...
And then I had another similar question, and it's, it's definitely an appropriate expense, but, but could become problematic. I'm on page 23. expense, but, but could become problematic. I'm on page 27 at the bottom. And for Title I, you're paying for a network administrator for your computer lab.
And now he's, I have split him.
Right, 50/50. But the question is, will 50% of his service time be for Title I students?
Mm-hmm.
Or whether, will it be 40? Do you see what I'm saying?
That's very hard to quantify and I did, I did wrestle with that. I don't know exactly how to, to come up with the exact amount of time. And I know that you need to. And maybe it's something that can be flexed a little bit. But the bottom line is, you know, I don't know exactly, how do you really determine, you know, if you spent an hour working on a computer that's used primarily by, or exclusively by Title I students or a certain percentage of the time, how much of that hour should be credited to Title I and how much not? So, yeah, very truthfully, did not know how to quantify that. I split him evenly between two different positions, or two different funds. But the, the goal really, my overall insight is that we need to have current and available technology working and in place for, for teachers and students to use regularly because of the world that we live in. So it's critical that we have a network administrator and quantifying exactly how much time he spends on certain computers of certain types is very difficult. So I would certainly be open to any suggestions you might have on how to do that.
No, no, it's a hard one because I don't, I mean, the, the percentage of Title I students is your, at your school is relatively small compared to
Correct.
Some of the other high schools.
And I, I mean, I know that if you purchase a computer with Title I money, that that computer needs to be dedicated to Title I students.
And I, I think that the network administrator, that that would be the same, the same kind of formula would have to apply.
Correct. But I guess my, my confusion in the whole process or, you know, my, my not understanding maybe, but the, if we, if I've got a computer that was purchased out of general funds, which is sometimes used by Title I student and
Right.
Sometimes used by other students, how much of the time spent that a network person might spend working on that particular computer, or even to complicate things further, working on the network as a whole, you know, how much of that time, I mean, the certain number of those computers connected to that network serve
Right.
A certain percentage of Title I students, a certain percentage of the time. But it's very difficult to quantify.
Yeah. No, I agree with you. It's a mind game.
Yeah.
But, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's sort of lonely to have to play.
Yeah.
Oh, one more, probably, yeah, I think this is just about the end of it. It was interesting looking at the plans because on the other plans, principals were looking at decreases in suspensions. And you went at it in a very different way, and that is engaging students in campus activities, clubs, teams, you know, that sort of thing, which I thought was a nice way to go at it. I think it would be really important to try and create some data connected to it, just raw numbers even, when you're, when you're comparing one year to the next. Because there's really no measure, it just says increased support in extracurricular activities. And clearly, when a student is more connected to school, they're going to perform better, they're going to be better citizens, that sort of thing. But I think that you, you would serve yourself well to try and, and figure out a way to measure it.
Yeah. Well, actually, that is the case. That, we do not have baseline data for that.
Okay.
It's all anecdotal. And as I said, one of the things that I did when I came to DP was I've just been talking to people. Why is this campus so different from any campus I've ever been on? I've worked at six schools in five districts. Five of those were high schools. And I've, you know, any of the other high schools I've worked at, it just, or the one, or the high school I attended for that matter, it doesn't feel the same. You walk on the campus and it's just very warm and inviting and it's not clickish. It's not, there's not posturing and grouping and segregation, just a bunch of kids being kids and being together. I mean, it's, it's a really wonderful feeling. So one of the first things I started doing was just talking to people. Why is that? Why do you think this is? How did this develop? And several things kind of rose to the surface as theories, but it's all anecdotal. And one of the theories is that we have a very strong tradition. You know, we're not the high school, of course, but we do have really strong and established traditions. And then the second thing was.
You're the high school.
That's right.
Woo-hoo.
But the other thing is that we have a very large number of clubs, anywhere between 50 and 75 clubs in a given year. Also lots of sports teams. And we have lots and lots of kids participating and co-mingling with lots of different other kids. And they get to know each other on those teams and in those clubs, you know. And we have some very offbeat kinds of clubs and some clubs that would attract all kids of all stripes, like video game club, you know. And so I think that's one of our really strong suits, is our traditions and our activities and sports. And the fact that we get so many kids involved. I don't have baseline data. And that's one of the things, the person who sees name attached to that funding.
Okay, okay.
Her job is to collect that baseline data this year so that we can make more targeted goals
Good.
In subsequent years.
Good, okay. I think that was, that was just about the end of it. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome.
Do we have more questions?
Ms. Rodriguez?
Just a couple of small things. Actually, Ms. Harder asked a couple of things I was also interested in. And I, too, noted the athletics and activities component, which I wasn't sure what to do with that. When I looked at the funding associated with it, I wanted, was a little curious about whether that's even justifiable expense under categoricals. And I'm not an expert on that, even after being on the board for four years. So I think it's, it's great. And I totally agree on the engagement of students. And I assume it's legal expenditure of our funds. And, but my question specifically about that was, when you say clerical support, I didn't, I guess I was a little bit unclear about what that, it's all being, so this person, Debbie.
Delwin.
Delwin Bowe is in a clerical position? Is that, okay.
Yes, she's a clerical position. She is support to the athletic department and student activities. She does all sorts of things that are critical to maintaining those programs, everything from scheduling transportation to maintaining volunteer records, to, you know, coordinating with other schools' schedules, to things for the activities, ordering, you know, T-shirts, preparing table. I mean, she does everything and anything that's asked of her to support those programs. And having actually never worked in a school where we had someone like that position, I can see the huge benefit of it, our programs. And it would not be nearly as strong or nearly as, I think, effective in bringing kids together, bringing kids in without her. So it's very critical that we have that position. And I think that, you know, again, I'm not an expert either. I believe that in my research, I found ed code that justified supporting, I actually didn't bring it out, print it out and bring it with me, but ed code, I researched the different funds and found what I think are legal basis, legal references to support that kind of a position in terms of increasing and improving school culture, so.
So as she collects data, will it be outreach to students to include more percentage of students in clubs and activities?
Correct.
And then maybe monitoring potential increases in your test scores or, or grades or?
Well, that's another thing that she does in terms of that. In terms of eligibility for athletes, she checks grades and that kind of thing too, so that we're making sure and keeping those kids, you know, academically eligible to be able to participate in all these other things. But part of her gathering of data will be, you know, overall numbers of opportunities for kids, numbers of kids participating in all of the athletic teams in the various clubs, keeping rosters of that sort, documenting, you know, new clubs, helping to sponsor a club fair, to be able, or helping to put on the club fair through the activities department to get more opportunities in front of kids to, to be able to participate. So it's a whole myriad of duties that she does that all supports our athletics and activities programs tremendously and makes them as successful as they are. And like I said, I think more than anything probably in this entire plan, in terms of making DP the really special place that it is, it has to do with those extracurricular activities, I think, and the fact that it brings kids together. I can't say enough about that.
And that includes music and drama as well?
Correct.
It's going to be, is anything non-core academic?
Anything extracurricular.
Okay. Thank you. A question about, I saw you have a truancy coordinator, I think, the second year or so. And have you, and I know that, I can't remember if San Marcos has one. I know that Santa Barbara High had one in the past. Have you found that to be successful at this point? Are you planning on continuing that position?
I'm assessing it. I know the other two schools, I believe, have gone to different approaches using people retention, not just a truancy coordinator, but somebody who's a little bit more proactive, almost a, you know, sort of a dean of students for freshmen and sophomores where they, they do, do the discipline, get to know the kids that way, also track their attendance and, and grades and that sort of thing. So that might be a different, maybe a better approach. I'm going to be talking to these two guys, you know, over the course of this year to see how that works for them. This was a position of a, a situation that was put in place prior to my coming. So I'm spending this year observing. I, there are a tremendous number of kids through his office. And he is a Spanish speaker and he does spend part of his day, actually in the evening, doing home visits. And I can't help but think that that's, has some positive effect. But in terms of quantifiable, I don't know.
Okay.
It didn't bear out in our attendance from last year. So if he was doing the same kinds of things this year that he did last year, I don't know that it did make an effect. So if we don't see an improvement this year, we'll be looking at a different way to, to try to address that same situation.
Thank you. I also had a question. I was looking at, on page 14 with, I was just kind of, my eye went to the pretty significant drop in the students with disabilities scores for English. Wait, no, for the CASSI, I'm sorry. Went from 68.7% in '04 and down to 86.2% being below proficient. Just wondering if you had any sense of that.
You know, I don't have a theory for that. It's interesting because I do have theories about why our STAR tests have been decreasing, our API and our, our scores on the CSTs have been decreasing. And I think that largely has to do with student apathy and maybe not enough teacher interest in promoting the test when the kids take it. I don't think that from two years ago, when we were in 814 API school to now when we're 784, that there's been a significant demographic change. There certainly hasn't been a significant staff change. I think our teachers are still teaching well. I think our students are learning well. I just don't think they tested very well for the last two years. So I have that theory that maybe we just need to do a better job of promoting it with kids and making sure that they understand. The exit exam, you don't have to promote because it's a high stakes test. So I don't, I don't have a, a working theory at this point about why those test scores dropped. I have looked at other schools. I don't have the figures on the top of my head right now, but I have looked at other schools and noticed that it seemed to be a trend in other schools as well. So maybe the, the framework of the test has changed or.
I'd like to comment on what is actually a related issue. And it hits AYP, it hits, of course, exit exam. But at the high school level, AYP is based on a particular group of 10th grade students that are taking the exit exam. Consequently, you see each of these columns for AYP as a different group of, of 10th grade students as they move through the school. And you'll see in the lowest populations, lowest incidence populations, English learners and students with disabilities, a lot more variability across all three schools. You don't see that in the general population. The school-wide figures look fairly consistent, but you certainly see it among English learners. One year, they'll go way up, the next year they'll go way down. And you see it among our students with disabilities as well.
Okay, thank you for the explanation for that. And then I guess my last question was, this is, I think, a really silly question, but I, well, maybe all of my courses are silly, but.
There are no silly questions.
The expenditure for the Excel coordinator, the stipend.
Mm-hmm.
I see it listed as $2,000 in several places. And I just wanted, is that $2,000, I was curious about that. Is that an overlapping number because it's, it's meeting different goals?
No. Yes. The, the sum of those numbers is the total stipend. The, it's listed in several places because she supports English, our English goals in part of her class. She supports math goals in part of her class. So yes, it's listed in several places. I broke it out in several, in several places. If you look through that list everywhere, you see her name and add them up, you will get to, I'll tell you how much, $4,000.
Right.
So you saw it in the two different spots.
I saw it in two spots. So.
So it's split evenly between English and math because she coaches in both.
And is that, forgive this question, because I'm sure it's pretty basic, but that's a stipend over and above the school day?
It's outside the school day.
Outside the school day.
She has a seventh period.
Doing seventh period, thank you.
She doesn't get paid on the teacher salary for that. This is stipend for doing the seventh period class.
Yes, okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
I had, oh, sorry. I had a question that, and it kind of goes back to what a lot of the schools, and even back to our, our elementary and junior high schools. And so I'm going to pose it to you, but it's really probably more general.
Okay.
And that is, I had someone ask me the other day, does the district see Avid as a panacea? And we're hearing, you know, a lot of the, the great results and sort of the, the hopes and, and real excitement that we have around Avid. How would you respond to that question? For, I'll ask you to just base, for Dos Pueblos.
Sure.
What's your take on, on Avid and its role within the, sort of, the, the range of other kinds of interventions and programs that we have?
Oh, I don't think Avid will ever replace all of the other interventions that we have in place. Avid serves a very particular targeted group of kids, those kids who are in the middle, who do not have, possibly do not have college-going role models at home, who are academically able but don't have necessarily the skills necessary to successfully compete in rigorous classes and who do not necessarily have the guidance necessary to navigate the college application, scholarship, grant process to actually get themselves into a four-year college. It's a very complicated process. And if you don't have someone who knows well what they're doing to advise them. So Avid serves, specifically serves a very targeted group of kids. And I don't think that it would ever blend over to be considered a target for at-risk kids, for example, or be considered some sort of a vehicle for kids who are already academically successful to get into college. The one thing that is true of Avid, however, is that it does, does serve as a little bit of a catalyst for change school-wide. The methodologies that are used in Avid classes are good, sound teaching. And when you send teachers to conferences to get staff development on good, sound teaching, you take them to the Avid Summer Institute, a few at a time, you bring back those methodologies. They get percolated out into the rest of the staff. Pretty soon, you're walking into classes and rather than seeing the teacher lecturing, you see kids involved in a philosophical chairs activity or a Socratic seminar or other things that are less teacher-directed, more student-driven, more collaborative, more, you see, the other thing you see is you see higher levels of thought, higher levels of questioning, Onkastas' levels of questions. For example, kids are being asked to analyze and assess things and rather than list things. And you see much better dialogue and discussion. So in terms of that, as a catalyst for school-wide change, for getting improved instruction and for seeing better things in the classroom when you walk out, yeah. In that regard, I think it does have a school-wide influence. But in terms of being a magic bullet or a panacea for all the different select areas that we're trying to fix, I don't see it as that.
Mark, I'd like to address that as well. And I'd like to frame it in the context of the board focus goals. The first board focus goal on student achievement had seven bullets. The second board focus goal for English learners had two bullets. If you take all those nine bullets together, those that address the highest achieving students, those addressing at-risk students, students that were working to elevate into higher level classes, those that are developing English skills, I can think of one bullet that it addresses directly, and that's the representation of students in higher level classes. And I can think of two other bullets that it, that it affects and could have fairly large effect, particularly in terms of API calculations and in terms of AYP goals. But it doesn't address the other goals directly.
And that's why he gets paid the big bucks.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. But I was going to say, you gave an admirable answer for the new kid on the block. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then if I could just ask you also, if you could just talk a little bit about AIM. Just explain it a little bit. Because I always find that, I'm, I'm, I don't think I fully understand it.
Sure. AIM is targeted instruction in mathematics geared at helping kids get to that point of being able to pass the exit exam. They. It's very closely related to exam-type questions that they, that. They, uh, it, it's very closely related to exam-type questions that they, that have been released in, in, from the exit exam. Kids are coached to look for, you know, when you see this question, what is the answer going to look like? They're coached about how to avoid attractive distractors in questions, things that are meant to mislead them. Uh, it's also very, uh, don't get me wrong, we're not teaching them or coaching them to pass the test, but they're getting some of those strategies and skills embedded into in core instruction in the, uh, in the competencies that they need to do well in, in basic algebra skills, in number sense and, and figuring. So, um, I guess the best way to put it is when you walk into that classroom, you see them doing a lot of math, but you see all of the answers to the questions and things that they're doing being structured in such a way that it, it gives them a vehicle to teach, um, to teach test-taking strategies at the same time.
I, that was my question is, because I always wonder if it's more of a sort of coaching program, something like we think of the SAT prep kind of programs, or is it more of an instructional program?
It's remedial math.
Okay.
It's going back to the very beginning and covering everything, giving them those, those skill sets that they need to do well. And then like I said, embedded in that are some strategies for actually doing well on the tests, but it's definitely math.
Thank you.
They're, they're teaching math 55 minutes a day.
Thank you. Dr. Malkov?
No, I did my last question.
Oh, you did yours already? Okay. I'm sorry. I think that's, I think that's the end of our questions for you. You were doing so well, I thought we would just keep going.
I know these guys are eager to get up here, so...
Yeah. They're chomping at the bit, I can tell you.
I'll yield the chair to them if you...
Well, thank you very much. And again, congratulations on your first presentation. You did an excellent job.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So that, yes, that brings us to San Marcos High School, and we will again have Mr. Zettel introduce our principal.
Thank you, Ms. Cordero. Uh, a couple of things with the, the last couple of questions, I had a, a thought. We have a very direct intervention with our reading programs in, in High Point and in SRA REACH or corrective reading. Uh, the state has not been so forthcoming with math intervention. And so, uh, in the face of that, now they are coming with more. And in the next year or two, we're going to see some very, uh, High Point-like programs for math, and I hope our, our folks grab a hold of that, uh, as, as we come forward. But, uh, uh, AIM has, AIM has filled a, a nice spot, uh, for us in that vacuum. Uh, I, I forgot to mention one other person on our, uh, district team, and I feel bad about that. Uh, Dr. Davis Hayden was not in the room. See, you know, when you're not here, Davis. I just wanted to thank you publicly, uh, along with the rest of our team that so ably assist and support our schools. There, there's two young ladies in the back here, Mrs. Harder. Would you like to introduce them as well?
I think they're state observers for our, I know they're not DP teachers.
Do they need additional instruction in single plan? Is that, uh? We give credit for administrative credentials in that.
One does, one does. Both, both former DP students.
This is Bring Your Daughter to Board Meeting Day.
Bring Your Daughter to Board Meeting. That's right. That's nice. Welcome, ladies. Well, it's my pleasure right now to introduce our next senior principal in, in the lineup here. Great principal at, uh, San Marcos High School, uh, kind of the high school in the middle. Uh, we have, you know, Dos Pueblos way out in Galita. We have, uh, Santa Barbara High and caught in the middle, Craig Morgan and San Marcos High. Hit it.
Thank you, Jan Zell. Thank you for having us tonight, my third or fourth time in this process. This is exciting. Um, as, as staff collaboration is embedded within the culture of San Marcos High School, this report is a product of several individuals I would like to thank. Site council coordinator Bob Gray, who is responsible for this document, organization in all the text and data input. The various goals in this living document were created by the following PLC data team leaders. In English, Mary Lindenstein, Title I co-chair and English department co-chair. Math, Jim Ashlock, Title I co-chair, site compliance review coordinator. ELD, Susan Kip, department chair, and special needs students Rita Kip, program specialist, and Pat Bixler, our special ed chair, along with Mary, Jim, and Susan previously mentioned, as our special needs PLC data teams span separately into English, ELD, and math. Every effort has been made to ensure that all included categorical funds are delineated, delineated specifically toward instructional improvement. In instances where personnel have been, uh, left in various positions, staff has not been selected to fill those vacancies. Vision for San Marcos High School: Safety. Have to have a safe campus if we're to improve instruction. Healthy, organized, and disciplined environment. Rigor. High expectations for all students. Relevance. Ensure students are engaged in their education, leadership, celebrated collaborative culture, recently recognized as a California distinguished school in oh five because of that collaboration. Character. Educating the whole child. Hence our character education movement this year. And budgets, making sure allocations are disseminated correctly. Current reality: We have over twenty-two hundred kids enrolled. We're making improvements in most area. We've had some statistically and significant declines in our English learners and Hispanic students. We have had a significant decline with students with disabilities. We are continuing to assess more students in subgroups specifically socio-economically disadvantaged kids and students with disabilities. We've created five school-wide focus area, and I'd like to also mention what they are and the supports that are in place for these goals. Again, a little bit different process in that I had our PLC team leaders, given them the data, had them come up with the goals so it was more embedded in the social entity of those PLCs. English language development, aligned to LEAP, double periods of ELD and High Point. Increased monitoring of student achievement. Community liaison takes care of that. Our site council, ELAC rep Teresa Lewis. ELD clerk, CELT coordinator Vivian Rangel. Ninth grade bilingual truancy case manager, Nubia Seoria. Title I co-director, Mary Lindenstein. And after-school tutoring. All those things are in place to help us improve those scores. In mathematics, another area of concern, our PLC data team, LEAP alignment, KC algebra AB class, KC prep with Renaissance Math, an individualized computer support program. Increased monitoring of student achievement by the community liaison, site council, ELAC rep Teresa Lewis. ELD clerk, CELT coordinator Vivian Rangel. Ninth grade bilingual truancy case manager Nubia Seoria. And Title I co-director in math, Jim Ashlock. Again, after-school tutoring for, with Carlos Cohen for those kids that need that support. Our third goal is reading language arts development. Avid instructional strategies utilization focusing on literacy across the campus in all disciplines. PLC data teams, KC English classes. With coordination and work with Lacumbra, we've created an English nine transition class that's going to morph into an English ten basic class for those kids that are ELD and transition into college prep English classes. They're going to focus on language standards, sample essays, rubrics, pre-writing strategies, and peer review. Students with disability is our biggest concern at San Marcos High School. Program specialist we have now in place Rita Kip. PLC data teams cross-curriculum in collaboration with English, ELD, and math. In other words, we don't just have one PLC in special ed. We have three, all hitting the ELD, math, and English language area. We're restructuring with Joanne's help here at the district, our individual instruction class, uh, classes focusing on CST and KC. Another area that we're having some success with already is culture and climate across our campus, making sure that we have a safe campus. PLC data teams are making progress in this area. National Conference and Community of Justice, NCCJ work, Associated Student Body. We've come up with the idea like DP has done for a long time of class competition, but now we're tying them to academic, academic achievement and attendance. Monthly character education themes through our ASB. October was respect, November responsibility, trustworthiness, caring, fairness, and citizenship throughout the rest of the year. School profile highlight, the strengths of San Marcos High School as it is today. Celebrated collaborative culture. Five of eight recent national merit semifinalists are from San Marcos High School. Very proud to say that. It's been since the late nineties that San Marcos High School had that many students recognized. Strong, outstanding, qualified teaching staff. Best teaching staff I've ever worked with in thirty-four years of secondary education. I guess I'm pretty old, huh? Strong co-curricular programs, athletic performance arts, performing arts and others, and embedded culture of best practice research like Daggett to improve instruction. Support programs, REACH, AVID, KC classes, ELA math support classes, the library, computer labs, after-school tutoring, clubs, committees, adoptive school partnerships. AVID data. AVID's been a big part of San Marcos High School because of Vicki Haynes. She's done a great job. Current ninth grade AVID class, twenty-nine students, twenty-eight Hispanic. Tenth grade REACH, twenty-nine students, twenty-eight Hispanic. Eleventh grade REACH, twenty-three students, twenty Hispanic, and twelfth grade, twenty-one students, eighteen Hispanic. So again, it's been there a long time. We're taking a slow integration of AVID into our curriculum, and I'll help you with that as you ask me ask questions later. CST improvement in four of seven areas as compared to two thousand and five, profite, percent proficient and above. Algebra one, we made gains, but it's, it's horrendous, from three percent to seven percent. Algebra two, thirteen to thirty-one. Biology, twenty-four to fifty-nine. In chemistry, we grew three to forty-two percent. Geometry, sumative math, and physics had small drops. So we did make some CST growth, but I've come up with a way, I think, to modify and implement some student motivation. We've created, as Santa Barbara High School has, a Royal University Club, previously unidentified students that already meet the need for the UC A to G requirements. We have twenty-four seniors in that club, sixty juniors, and growing. We are now a testing site for PSAT, SAT, PLAN, and ACT. This will all be given during the school day to our kids like DP has done. In October, we had the highest number of PSAT tests given in school history. And as of today, I've organized an ASFAB test for the entire district to be given at San Marcos High School in January. School community strengths of San Marcos High School. Students are industrious, conscientious, respectful, and enthusiastic, led by our ASB Student Council. Staff, the technical core, knowledge, commitment, organization, and spirit of collaboration. Parent and community is involved and supportive. PTSA, ELAC, and school site council. ELAC meetings with Teresa Lewis's help. Our first two meetings this year had over fifty parents involved because of her hard work. The first two, of the first two, and Teresa Lewis also serves on our school site council and then that evening takes that same information to our ELAC meetings. AP, AP growth, new course offerings in oh five, oh six, European and World History and Environmental Science this year. We also, last year, tested a hundred and ten more kids in AP tests than the year before. The next two things I'm the most excited about, I'm, I'm trying to hurry Cynthia over there so I get this record, but I think I'm going to blow it. I have come up with a bell schedule that will create staff development time from fourteen hours this year to thirty-six hours while reducing the time of instruction on the day by one minute. The next thing came out of Dufour that I visited Ventura High School during that football game that evening with the old principal, another old guy, and they've come up with a way of modifying the bell schedule to, to prepare another period, in our case it would be period two, with twenty minutes of interventions for kids that did not pass the CST, the KC, or other tests. Those kids that passed the proficiency level or above would have a twenty-minute extended lunch, park in specific places, have be given other awards, um, consequently giving a little bit of motivation to kids to take the CST seriously. I, I've been looking for this for a long time. I'm really excited. I hope I can sell it to our staff. Barriers and challenges to the progress. Continued support for PLCs and AVID. Continued support funding the entitlements in the restricted as well as unrestricted areas. Instructional supplies is a concern. Maintenance of qualified staff, keeping them here in Santa Barbara. Lack of quality substitute teachers. It's been better. I've only subbed once today. Lack of time to develop and nurture relationships. Again, if we can sell the time for staff development, that's the big deal. Actions to continue positive patterns. Continue to build PLC data teams and vertical teaming. If we can get that time for one late start a week, every, every week, we have one day, I can team up with David, we can team up with La Colina Lacumbra and have vertical teaming. I'm really excited about that opportunity. Continue to improve and implement the PLC. Continue to recruit and develop quality staff. Data analysis with embedded SMART goals. This is going to take some time, but I'm going to go over each one of these. English language development, a minimum of twenty-two point three of EL, LEP students will attain proficiency on the EL portion of the KC. A minimum of twenty-five percent of our EL, LEP students will attain proficiency on the math portion of the KC. Eighty percent of our English language learners will advance one level on the CELT test. Fifty-two percent of our English language learners will attain English proficiency on the CELT. In math, a minimum of twenty-one percent of all students enrolled in mathematics will attain proficiency on quarterly teacher-derived assessments. A minimum of sixty-five percent of all 10th grade students taking the KC math test will achieve proficiency or higher. A minimum of twenty-one percent of algebra students will score at or above proficiency. Reading language arts, a minimum of twenty-two point three percent of all students will attain proficiency on department-developed quarterly assessments. A minimum of sixty-five percent of the students taking the English language arts portion of the KC will attain proficiency. Students with disabilities, our highest area of concern and greatest area of emphasis. All special ed students will make scale score gains toward proficiency on the CST and math and ELA, English language arts. A minimum of twenty-two, three percent of students taking the English language arts portion of the KC as sophomores will attain proficiency. A minimum of twenty-one percent of students taking the KC math test as sophomores will achieve proficiency. Finally, lastly, thank you for letting me go through that. Culture and climate, student attendance will increase or will increase by one percent. First two months, we've been able to do that. Student suspensions will decrease by twenty-five percent. We've already attained that goal in the first two months by forty-three percent, so we've decreased that. Overall actions are monitoring evaluating process. PLC data teams in English, ELD, math, and all the special ed teams, but we've also added PLCs in science and social science. AVID instructional methodologies will continue to be implemented by teacher leaders during staff development meters, meetings as we focus on literacy improvement. English language, English learners, PLC data teams and so forth. Double period for High Point sections and stuff I've already mentioned. English PLC data teams, extended learning time with KC tutorial classes. Math and the different classes we've added there along with the PLC and special ed and the culture and climate of AVID, diversity, equity, PLC data teams and support materials. Professional development plan, I'll get through this quickly. In August, we worked on Cornell notes throughout our entire campus with all of our people as we focus on literacy improvement. Staff development days. We now, we don't have admin meetings or staff meetings. It's all done administrivia by electronics. We continue to implement the AVID best teaching practices, Cornell notes. We're going to be going to Socratic seminar probably in February or March with Cynthia's help over on the side. We'd like to go to PLC data team weekly meetings after school and lunch. Our teachers, like Mark has mentioned, are informal in their nature, don't want to stay after school, but do it informally during lunchtime. Leadership role and approach to monitoring programs built to build skill, committed team, and school community. Approach via school community leadership to regularly monitor the different levels, teachers, staff, counselors, assistant principals, in classroom and on-campus and in meetings. Specific leadership actions, give praise when approached... Give praise when appropriate while holding staff accountable, constantly recruiting new leaders and placing them in training situations. Current admin team. After Paul left today, we have two experienced administrators. I have one administrator in their first year being administrator, and I now have two teachers on special assignments of our five folks. That's gonna be an interesting challenge as we bring administration along. Teacher leadership and monitoring student achievement. Informal PLC meetings before and after school. Department chair is elected to serve a two-year term, also serve on the principal's advisory council. And we do have some peer observations going on informally as we get that started. The rationale for school councils, budget allocations. We shared the student scores with school planned PLC team members and derived specific areas of focus and consequent goals. We followed with categorical support for these specific areas using scientifically best practice research instructional support as well as district recommendations to make every effort to ensure student improvement. Rationale for the School Site Council budget allocation. We ensured that all funding allocations were legally and physically responsible. We, all process steps in budget creation and allocation was shared with School Site Council as well as ELAC prior to approval. Question and answer sessions were held and information was disseminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Welcome.
We appreciate your thorough report. It covered a lot of, a lot of things that I think were, were sort of embedded in the, in the report that you gave to us, but it was, it was very thorough in the sense that it brought out a lot more things and, and in fact, it covered some of the questions that I was gonna ask you. Should I, I'll just go ahead and start. I had just a couple of questions. As I said, your, your presentation covered some of them. One of them was that last year, you mentioned wanting to have an AP Spanish class. And you mentioned a couple of the, of the AP classes that you had added, and I wondered if you added the AP Spanish class.
It still exists.
Ah.
This report is a function of what's going on this year.
Okay.
Everything I read to you, pardon me reading so much, there's so much new stuff going on at the school. This is a reflection of what is new or where we're going with different stuff. So that class, and thank you for asking, has been somewhat successful. However, it wasn't as successful in integrating the change that I wanted in promoting more kids into AP sections as I had desired. It only affected 28 or 29 students. That wasn't the mass change that I wanted in the culture of the school.
Were those 28 students underrepresented in, in AP classes, though?
All of them.
Ah, well, that's...
So it was a step, but what, what my friend, it's the principal down at Bell Gardens had done, and you have to understand, it's a school of 3,000 all underrepresented kids. That was a catalyst for changing the entire culture and getting more kids to go into AP. We're doing a lot of other support things with Royal University Club, like the Home of the Dons is doing and other things like that. So it's, it's an exerted emphasis on trying to meet and engage all of our kids, keeping the AP rigor at the top, working at Avid in the middle and other stuff as well.
Well, that actually touches on the other question I wanted to ask you, which was, you gave us the ethnic breakdown of the students in Reach and Avid, et cetera, and I was wondering what the ethnic breakdown is of the Royal University Club?
100% underrepresented kids.
Ah, okay. And those are all students who are currently on track to, to meet the UC, is it UC requirements?
UC and Cal State.
And Cal State, okay. Ah, okay. And I can't remember how many students you said there were.
20 seniors and 65 juniors, but it's growing all the time. That's the cultural morph that I did not understand is as our counselors are going out and the kids are talking to kids, hey, I wanna go to this too. So we've got a parent potluck, December 13th, and the parents are gonna come up. Our two meetings before have been at lunch or after school. Now we're starting to engage parents. It's, it's an oddity, and I, I can only thank Paul and the counselors at Santa Barbara for having the idea, and then we were able to get a counselor from Santa Barbara that's doing a great job, that's also helped support that along with Sergio Castellanos, one of our great, ex, great counselors at San Marcos.
Great. Thank you.
Just to add to that, I'm not sure I understand what it is that the, the, is it the Royal University? Is that what it's called? What is it? Is it a club after school? Is that what it is?
It's a club that was created by counselors when we did a query to determine what kids had completed A to G that were underrepresented college kids and were giving them support to make sure that they fill out their applications, that they take all the right tests. Again, it was my counseling background, I knew that I had kids that I had gotten into Cal States and in one case, two cases, football athletes at SC by taking the ACT and the PLAN before that. So it's kind of the Avid kids, my Avid kids I had before got into Cal States, not all got into UC. So I mean, it's all, I, I'm ecstatic with where this district's going. I wish I could work another 10 years. But it's going, Jan's got the second, going exactly the right place at the right time. It's gonna be very interesting, come back in a couple of years and see where this, where the district is with our underrepresented kids.
That sounds exciting. I congratulate you on your merit scholarships. Those are wonderful. I, I, in the, in your packet here, we have on page, what page is this? 11 of 56 is, did I get this right, is the SAT scores? I've never seen this before. Did I just miss this in other places? They have the, the SATs, the average scores and so forth. This is wonderful.
I think what I did, what, what Mr. Gray did when he printed this is he included the, I'm trying to think of what the other plant?
SARC.
The SARC, and that's, that's probably year-old data, I'm sure, and that's what's different, Dr. Malkoff, in what you're seeing that's not included. That was an error on our part to include that. It's not complete. It's not complete data.
We have a report on SAT scores and AP scores coming to the board.
Okay, okay. Well, I still like it, even if it's, if it's older. Avid, could you tell us how you plan on growing Avid?
Slowly, so that it encompasses the culture of the school. As it grows, it's going to take electives away from folks. So if I was gonna come in and make sweeping change, that's not gonna be successful or sustained. So we're gonna take it slowly. I've got, there was only two of us that went to Avid training last summer. That was purposeful. This year, we'll have six to eight go, and it'll slowly, slowly morph into the entire culture of the campus. My, my person that I go to for Avid is Mark, sitting right next to me, that I was at demonstration site in Sacramento. So I ask a lot of questions, even though I was a long time ago at another school that bought in Avid and actually saw the lady that created Avid teach in San Diego. That was a big thrill, yeah. So that, I, a slow integration so that it is sustained.
So next year, perhaps one more grade?
Absolutely. Well, we have, we have Avid Reach classes in all, in all grades. We chose to bring in the Avid model at ninth grade. They'll go into 10th and so forth, but the electives are gonna go out, spread out, and that's, that's, that's the thing that, that Jim, the principal at Oxnard has brought in in a slow fashion. Yeah, I, I would guess he's been doing it four or five years. I'm just guessing. Three. It's, but it's, it takes time to do that so that you don't destroy electives.
Yeah, or meet up with the resistance for the...
Correct.
I, I'm just curious, from your point of view, what the difference is between Avid and Reach? I, I'm not familiar with Reach. I just got to see Avid in Oxnard, but I, I just was curious from your...
I, I think that Avid has a real prescribed instructional strategy program, and I think Reach, I, I'm not sure the history in this district. It was Avid at one time, it morphed into Reach, it's back to Avid. And I think that, I'm not sure to answer your question, but I believe that the Avid methodologies have some real prescribed things that have to take place where Reach is more site-based and freer to be its own entity.
I, a couple more questions. The suspensions changed quite a bit. Would you like to talk about that?
Absolutely. I, I met with you a year ago, and I said we, I thought we had some data that needed to be corrected and some processes that need to be fixed. We have been able to use a grant to have another administrator come on board, another teacher on special assignment. And what that individual has the time to do is look and see what's going on that we didn't have time to do. We're in a reaction mode a year ago. Now we have some time to put some proactive things in place. One of the things, again, we took from Paul. Hey, have parents come in and sit with their kids in classes rather than have them being suspended at home. So that's, it's a number of things, but we just work real, real hard on attendance and a decrease in suspension rate. Maybe an emphasis.
So you've got parents walking around in, in the classes and classes?
A few, just enough to let the kids know that this is what's gonna happen. That's kinda fun.
I would think so. We heard from the Lacumbra end also about your work with Lacumbra and the ninth grade English, and they were very excited about it, and it sounds like a good step.
Yeah, we're excited.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan. Okay, tell me how you're gonna grow 14 to 36. Did you say hours?
Oh.
I feel like it's like Harry Potter where Hermione spun the dial and we...
It's, it's all Jan's, and it, and what it has to do with, if I'm correct, and I could be wrong, you are, we are allowed up to seven minutes for a passing period that would count as instructional time. Okay? At the end of your day, you have so many instructional minutes in excess of what we currently have by changing that one modification.
So you're recouping passing minutes?
Yes.
How does that, how does that jive with the contract?
Let me, let me answer, because Jan may not know this. Our actual instructional minutes, class time remains the same. 90, 95, 90 and 90.
Okay, so you're just compressing the passing time and then taking those saved minutes and putting them somewhere else?
An example is, right now, we have a, a 15-minute nutrition break. 10 minutes don't count. There's a five-minute passing period that does count. Between period three and four, we currently have a 10-minute time. Five minutes is passing. Five minutes doesn't count for anything. So what I've done is of the first 15 minutes of nutrition, eight minutes counts for nothing. Seven minutes counts as passing. The same at the end of lunch. The same at the end of passing between third and fourth. That increases a six minutes a day, times the number of days that we have. In addition to that, we had seven early dismissal days. So I picked up hours of time with those seven days for staff development. And when you put it all in the packet and roll it into the district's program, I still come up with 295 minutes bank time on top of what we need for a minimum instruction for our seniors. Every grade level has different instructional minutes because of the different testing. So right now, I've planned for 36 60-minute late start days a week. I'm gonna try to tie it in to Thursday with David at La Colina. So that gives me that many more days. But as I looked at the calendar Sunday, there was only 33 days, 33 Mondays this year. So I'm actually gonna have more instructional time on top of the 295 minutes. It's just a way of manipulating the passing periods. I'm asking Anna Hernandez if what I've calculated is accurate. It seems to work according to Ed Code and everything else, but I'm still waiting for the, the actual answer. Somehow, I'm gonna manipulate, because I've done it before at other schools, it's the manipulation of the passing periods that seems to be able to give you more time to bank.
One of the difficult things in this district is an MOU with a union contract, and it, to change the contract day in any way takes a vote of the membership at each site, and that's, that's the issue that Mark has been having, trying to, trying to get the staff to see the value in, in professional development minutes and, and banking those minutes. And Craig is going to have that vote also, but it, you are exactly right, it is part of the contract that we get a, a union vote on it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Couple little questions. ASFAP, is it the Armed Services Vocational Assessment?
Battery.
Whatever. Okay, so it's all gonna be done on your campus?
After school. It's still in the planning. We're looking at January 19th. We do want it in our site. There will be communication going to the other schools of, of kids that would like to come up and take it. I did this purely personal. If it hadn't been for the military in the 60s and 70s, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I never would've gone to college. I never would've finished. So the military service, I'm, I'm not a big proponent of it, but...
We actually had somebody come to Public Comment, I think it was Public Comment at a meeting, to, to talk about it, and it, it actually sounds like it could be a really valuable tool for some students. But the armed services in front of it leads parents to believe that somehow if you take this exam, that you're being put in a database or that there's some tie-in or connection to, or obligation to taking the exam. So when you get the word out, I think you're gonna have to deal with, with that part of it, that it's something available to any student with no strings attached. Tell me a little bit more about what's happening between you and Lacumbra with the ninth grade English.
We had a meeting, series of meetings last summer, and they indicated to us, we, we knew we had a disconnect with kids that were being sent to us that weren't being successful. With our two English chairs and counselors involved, we problem-solved for the creation of this new English nine transition class. And it was a collaborative situation over probably six hours of work, and then I was able to get some money for our Mary Lindenstein and another lady to do some collaboration over the summer to come up with some curriculum and some texts, and we were off and running in August and September.
So the students are identified by Lacumbra?
We collectively do that. Our counselors identify the kids.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But the, but the issue, if I can take it a step further, our kids coming out of, we knew from test analysis, our kids coming out of ELD and High Point classes, when they transitioned into college prep, were not having success. The support for them went away. This is not rocket science. Paul's done the same thing. We took it, we twisted it San Marcos's way, and that's, that's what sends support for those kids. We don't know if we're gonna need an English 10. We've got that prepared and ready to go.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's, the other value is, I'm working with two great, three, three great principals. We sit down and talk, hey, I'm having a problem with this. Jan's helped us with our secondary principals meetings this year. We have time this year to sit and talk about common problems. That hasn't been the case before, so it's collaboration with us. So I've got, I've got great people to work with and then a lot of experience.
Indeed. And then one final question. You didn't talk at all about your parent university, and it's not a lot of money that is going to it. Tell me who, well, there are parents of at-risk Title I students, and I'm assuming these are not parents who are involved in your ELAC. Usually those are parents of higher achieving students general. Yes, no? Is there a crossover?
They can be one of the same. There is a crossover.
Okay.
Sergio Castellanos runs it along with another counselor and Teresa Lewis. Teresa Lewis has been magnificent as a community outreach person. She has really done a tremendous job. And she's, pardon me, it's a lot of people to thank, but it's basically educating our parents on a number of things. University is one, but parenting skills are also involved in that.
Do you have C-Bet on your campus?
I'm not sure what that is.
Community-based English tutoring?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, this sounds a lot like...
It may be.
C-Bet. Okay, I know you have one on your campus.
Santa Barbara Junior.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much. Did you win the award so far for brevity?
I don't, how did I, oh my gosh.
You...
Uh-oh.
You gonna owe everybody dinner or something?
I don't know. Whatever they want me to do. Almost.
Well, thank you very much. And you, actually, your presentation also addressed some of the questions that I had. Couple of things. I, I was very interested in the teaming with the junior high, and we heard Joanne's presentation on Friday. I'm also very aware of sort of the, the elementary to, to high school continuum, and I was curious about, since I have a child at Harding, and Harding is on... about, since I have a child at Harding, and Harding is on track to go to Lacumbra, to go to San Marcos. And I think we had a conversation about this perhaps at the last single plan meeting about that, and bringing some of the high school kids down to the elementary level, sort of working with them, and of course, the principals working together as well. Are you all three, well, I know there's other feeder schools involved, but at least are the principals of, are you meeting with Ms. Kingston as well as Ms. Keynes and any of the other elementary schools that feed in?
No, I have not yet. My first wish is to tie curriculum vertically with our two feeders and have common planning time. We have talked about having our kids go out and being tutors in the elementary setting because of some of our kids have some release periods as juniors and seniors. I have not, I continue to bring that up at our PAC meetings, and I have not found a teacher yet to run with that idea. We're looking at a performing arts academy that I hope we can get online next year, but I, I've gotta take her for that. But I haven't got someone that's willing to step up and help with the tutoring at this point.
Yeah, it'd be great to have some role models for the kids. They get a lot of the university students who are not necessarily their role models.
Right.
You know, they're coming from a very different background, and these kids really benefit from having...
I agree.
Kids more like themselves coming back and showing how successful they've been, so... Let's see, I had a question, well, just a comment. It looks like your community liaison has been very successful, and I appreciated seeing, you know, how she was plugged in in so many different places to your program. That was just a comment. I had a question, though, about... One of your, oh, the study hall supervisor that you have, I thought that was an interesting use of, quite a substantial amount of categorical funds, which I know is perfectly well justified, but I hadn't seen it that way in any of the other schools, at least not defined in that way.
Right.
So is that just sort of another way of naming tutor or...
Yeah, I would say it's probably unique. We have a number of kids, not a number of kids, but we have kids on dismissal, junior and senior year, that don't have a four-period day all the time. This is a place for them to go and get tutoring during the day, and we utilize funds for that individual.
Okay. And that's a credential teacher on site?
He is on his way to getting a credential teacher. He is, has his degree, and he's going, he's involved in the teacher credential program, UCSB.
I know I had another question, but, sorry, I can't think of what it was. But thank you very much for, for your presentation, and it sounds like you've, you've got an attack plan for all of your challenges and...
We'll see how successful we are. Lynn, thank you for your support, coming into this district new. You were one board member, not that all of them were, but you've been great to work with. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I neglected one of my questions, I apologize, because I was distracted by the comments that you raised, and I wanted to ask you questions about those. This may be a really simple answer, but on paper, it looks a little weird. And that is, I'm, I was looking at how SIP slash library funds were being allocated. And for example, there's $1,500 allocated to a Casey testing coordinator, and $2,500 allocated to a pianist. And I was thinking, is that because for the pianist, though, there were no other possibilities of funds, and so the SIP funds were, really had to cover the entire stipend?
Yes.
And the Casey coordinator, is there other funds that go into that person's stipend?
I don't have that available with me tonight. That sounds about total that amount, and the $2,500 for the pianist has been one of those things that I inherited at the school. I've looked for other resources to try to, donations and so forth, that hasn't been successful thus far. So it's still involved in our SIP.
Let me just follow up real quickly. I just wanna, I'm assuming that the $1,500 for the Casey coordinator is not the full cost of the coordinator?
We, that may be, and I'd have to look at my notes, but we have also some hourly people that come in to help administer that test. So I'd have to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be basic.
Okay, no.
I just don't know. I know that we have costs out of SIP for the coordinator. We also have costs for, for people that will come in and help administer the test. But that's not true, that's true beyond the Casey. We also do that with other tests as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think that's it. We can, and I again managed to flip over my agenda, I think we can move on to our final presenter, and again, we'll have Mr. Zettel do the introductions for us.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero, and it's my pleasure to introduce the principal now of that great lady, Doña Santa Barbara High School. I had to bring out the Doñas. Little feminine touch there, too.
Very nice.
Yes. Our final presentation from Paul Turnbull, who's in his second year, doing great things and doing a whole lot of things at Santa Barbara High. It's all yours.
Thank you. First of all, let me just say that as the second-year principal at Santa Barbara High School, it's really exciting to have gone to my, let me count up the CIF championships that I've gone to so far. Three so far this year, that's this year, into the microphone. That would be two last year. I think that's five in six months. It's a very exciting time to be at Santa Barbara High.
Bragging will get you everywhere.
And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
There is such a thing as athlete scholars.
There are. And can I say, out of the, you'll notice that I didn't say "oot" like a Canadian. Out of the, I think it's fifty-eight top seniors, as far as our GPA getters, I believe there are, it's like forty or forty-two are athletes. So yes, we break the mold. Santa Barbara High School has 2,400 and about 50 students. We have around 123 teachers, if you include some of our part-time teachers who aren't on campus the full day. Eighty-two support staff, so we have over 200 faculty and support staff on campus. We have, as far as our API is concerned, a 10-point total growth from last year. We went from 743 to 753. The one piece of our API that did not increase, however, was our English language learners. They backslid nine points. I'll get into that a little bit later. As far as the focus is concerned, I'm really gonna talk about two things, the academic and the social, all the way through this short presentation, because Cynthia is timing us. The academic, our major focus right now is the fact that we have 25% of our 11th graders who have yet to pass the exit exam, and 21% of our 12th graders who have yet to pass the exit exam. We've already had many of those, if not all of them, sit through the first administration of the exit exam. And I know that, like this past year, many of those, right down to under 10%, will be going into the summertime yet to pass. Our EL student achievement, as I mentioned, dropped nine points. When I got there last year, we ended up with something like nine, 393 English language learners who were misplaced, completely misplaced. And rather than going into the entire reason why, we discovered why, and we did as best we could in a very, very short time to make sure that that was corrected. As far as our, we call them combo classes there, and they were instituted before I got there. It was a great idea, and they carry on, and I believe Cynthia was, was a large part of that. The English language learners that could handle that kind of rigor were placed into those classes. And when we start looking at the actual CST scores for ninth and 10th grade Title I, which is essentially where those students landed, the ninth graders almost doubled their scores from the year before, and the 10th graders more than doubled their, their scores from the year before, English Language Arts. So that's one area, we do know that there was success. When we go back to the English language learners that I mentioned before, this year, the goal was, using all of last year in preparation, no major schedule changes across a six-week span, so that teachers and kids are being shuttled back and forth, making sure that they're, they're placed according to data, making sure that the teachers understand what the data meant, and then teaching the counselors exactly what the data means, where the kids go, and how to make a spot judgment. And if they couldn't, they, they actually received a packet about as thick as this, bi-grade with templates and charts and exactly where to put kids, and they knew who to, who to talk to and where to go. So that worked out very well, and I'm very confident that that won't happen again this year. One other thing that, as far as our, our focus on academics is concerned, we went to, we being me and five teachers from a variety of different departments this year, went to Boston and attended a school redesigning conference at Harvard University with the focus that we got back to the technical core. Richard Elmore, the professor at Harvard, talks about the technical core, and that's linking students, academics, and teachers, the content all together, and that's sort of that triad. And frequently, we can talk about all kinds of things, like redoing a bell schedule, or redoing tutorials, or various other data-driven things. But if you're not talking about direct instruction and the way that direct instruction links to student achievement, then you're going around the mulberry bush. And so we've, we've gone headlong into it. Our goal is to improve instructional techniques on a, on a global scale, and I'll explain a little bit later how we're doing that, but it's, it's already seen some, some pretty outstanding success. The social climate is the second piece, and I mentioned that I'll talk about that as well. Nancy, you, Mrs. Harder, I apologize, you talked about how the other schools had, for the most part, said that they wanted to decrease suspensions. And we're fully into that. I'd like to decrease our suspensions by about 5% this year. So far, our, if you compare last September to this September, it's about the same, 26 suspensions. Last October was 40, this October was 26, again. So we're, we're slowly decreasing. And we do that by increasing our interventions. Interventions such as a Saturday school that includes a retreat. We took 20 students, underrepresented students, who had a variety of different issues going on, from attendance to discipline to medical issues. We took them off-campus with two teachers and three counselors, and we broke them out into groups, and we literally taught them how to interact with each other. It was, it was the typical kind of Saturday school. And the deal was that in the afternoon, their parents had to come. They had to be almost taught how to interact with their students as well, and what it meant to have a difficult conversation. And when we got back to school, we brought those students back and again, had them meet with counselors, then paired them up with student mentors, and then basically let them out into their classes, knowing fully well that they were gonna be monitored. And so far, out of those 20 students, we've had two students with suspensions. So, you know, so far, so good. It's about three weeks into it, so we'll see how it goes. The biggest thing that we, we really wanted to do by increasing the, the interventions was get some baseline data. It's easy for people to say that one school or another is not a great place to be, but unless we have data, we don't know. So we paired up with UCSB's psychology department. We've initiated a survey on bullying, so that we know when it happens, where it happens, to whom it happens, why in some instances. And the nice thing is that we have UCSB student, our grad students, who are taking down all the information and using all of that time, not us, and we'll get that information back quickly. We're also sending seven people to the Mean Girls Conference down in LA in early December, because, holy smokes, Mean Girls. That's all I have to say about that. School profile, our school...
And he said that with a really straight face to four women sitting on the stage.
I looked down, did you notice? Mean Girls. As far as our, our school profile is concerned, we have, we have a veritable cornucopia at this Thanksgiving holiday of strength. That was, that was really funny. You're supposed to laugh. It was good. We have an instructional leadership team and a school leadership team. The school leadership team is composed of individuals from across the demographics, as far as our, our, our staff is concerned. We have veteran teachers, we have teachers of youth, we have electives and core teachers all together. And I basically bounce all kinds of ideas off of them. I talk about directions I'd like to go, and they tell me which landmines not to step on, and some, they say, it's okay, we'll, we'll help you out. The instructional leadership team is what we're really proud of. The instructional leadership team is composed of nine individuals. They are going out into the classrooms, and this gets back to the technical core I spoke about before with, with Richard Elmore. They're going out into classrooms. We're targeting teachers that are new, meaning three years of service and younger, and teachers of SADI classes. Well, that's one thing I forgot to mention. Part of the issue with our EL misplacements, our English learner misplacements last year, were a very low number of SADI classes. We've more than doubled the number of SADI classes this year. So we have students in SADI classes all the way through the core, all the way up through trigonometry, which is, which is excellent. So they're targeting those classes, they're going into the classroom, they're either team-teaching with teachers, observing teachers, or teaching for the teachers. In some cases, they're releasing teachers out of their classroom and subbing for them during the day, so that they can go and visit other peers and glean information. One anecdote that I have as a teacher, at the beginning of this year, that I was very concerned about as far as techniques and ability, who upon further visits, has shown me that he's, he's really learning a lot. There was one lesson, in fact, that all the students were engaged, there were, there were multiple activities going on. It was a very difficult population, and the lesson was essentially piecemeal together from three different visits to three separate teachers that he'd gone to. He was doing an excellent job, and I'm, I'm very proud of him. Our interventions also include a variety of different things. We have a counseling intervention team, which is the Santa Barbara High version of an SST. It's a bilingual and an English meeting that happens, they're full days. That was instituted before I got there as well. PLCs and Avid are another thing that we're, we're using frequently, and the PLCs especially have taken off, and the minutes keep flowing in from the variety of different teams that have been meeting on our campus. And again, the climate that we talk about, our attendance, before I got to the school, was not the best in the world, and last year, we were, if not the best, tied for the best. I think our attendance, our active attendance rate was 94.8% on average, which is a fairly good turnout. As far as the barriers are concerned for that particular issue, our enrollment numbers, you'll see, if you go through some of our FTEs, you'll see that we're not meeting our Morgan Hart numbers the way that we could in ninth grade for English and math, and that's because we simply have too many students to put 20 students only in some classrooms. All of our classes, second, third, and fourth period are used every day, so there's no room for movement. And it's, it's very difficult. Common planning time, like the other high school principals have mentioned, is an issue for us. I've also looked at our bell schedule, and right smack in the middle of negotiations have given them a proposal for a, a new bell schedule, and it's, it's really, it's going really, really well, I think. Really well. I'll let you know how that goes later. As far as our facilities are concerned, the one issue that we really do have, we have no faculty lounge. There is no place on our campus for our teachers to be together. And because we have 13 traveling teachers, we have no place for teachers to stay during their preps. So we've become essentially almost like 200 waiters having 30 to one, 30-second to one-minute conversations passing in the hallway. It's, it's a difficult place, and right now, unity is a pretty big issue for us. Finally, the technical core, as I mentioned before and will continue to mention, is an issue for us, and the barrier right now is that some of our teachers are a little reticent to have their peers come into the classroom and start making anecdotal comments about what they saw or did not see. And we're working through that. A good example of how we, we rolled it out, the second and third day of the three-day staff development days before the school year started... development days before the school year started, included me saying, "Here's the deal, it's all about support, we're going to work together, this is a good thing." The first day it happened, they were very happy, there were applause, and we were, you know, everybody's looking around at each other like, "This is a good thing." The second day, we started talking about standardized language, academic language. Okay, if I go see Mrs. Cordero, it isn't just me going in for friendly time, there has to be something involved with this. We're talking about academic instruction. So, we came up with a protocol that would help guide the discussions, and that went completely subterranean in about a half a second. So, we stepped back from the protocol, and we simply got to ground rules. The ground rules being, I'm going to talk to Mrs. Cordero before I actually go to her room, I'm going to let her know that this is what I would like to see, this is why I would like to see it, I'm going to be on time, things like that, and I'll have a discussion with her afterward. The people who were the most vocally opposed to it are the people who have done it the most so far. It's pretty interesting. And because of that, on January 20th and 22nd, two researchers from Harvard are coming out to our school, and they're going to write a case study on us, which is very exciting. So, it's nice to have your school associated in one way or another with one of the best post-secondary institutions in the country. As far as answers are concerned, I'd like to get into data. And as far as our data is concerned, I mentioned our Title I classes in English Language Arts, ninth and 10th grade, we did very well, so we've continued that but refined it. And we're always refining and making sure things are better. Algebra didn't slip at all, we had a minor increase, which is fine, which is fine. The thing that we did do was change the algebra, the lower track of algebra, by removing it from a three semester class and changing it into a two semester class. So, we particularly call it Algebra 1 Ninth, meaning ninth grade. We know that these kids are, they're behind a year, it's supposed to be a ninth grade curriculum. And it's turned out that the teachers are starting to believe me that it's not so bad, and the kids are doing well. And so, now what we're doing is looking ahead. Okay, three years is a minimum requirement for high school graduation, what's that third year going to be? Is it going to be a low-level Algebra III, IV trig? And the teachers are saying, "This is not a good idea because there's a litmus test in trig, and it just doesn't work out for most of these students." So, what I'm looking at right now is Math 100, which is a one semester class at City College. You have to test into it. It's college algebra, but it's the same algebra with more rigor that the same students have seen, and these kids are generally the kids who never, ever would have gone to take anything in City College. And I think that there's a better out for them there than there is in ROP computer applications, with nothing against ROP computer applications. So, we're going to work on that one. The data for student placements I talked about, we taught our counselors exactly what that means, the teachers understand that we now have leveled classes, and we do that based on reading comprehension. Reading comprehension gets you into a two-period elective or English class, and reading comprehension will get you out, which is where the immediacy and the importance and sense of urgency from the CSTs come now for our particular students. They realize that, oh, this counts, that's important for them. Literacy coaches and math coaches are individuals who are working to support the students in the classrooms. That's working out very, very well. I mentioned we have double the SADI classes, and we are increasing the representation of Hispanic students in our advanced classes. We did that partially because of our data and placing students and taking a parental role, essentially saying, "No, you can't take the easy way out. You're an intelligent student, in you go." And also partially by increasing the number of honors classes that we currently have. So, in our English Language Arts, for example, we have GATE, honors, and college prep, and we're increasing the number of students who are exposed to the honors level curriculum. Our professional development hits exactly the same things that I mentioned already. It's the focus on the technical core, the Harvard case study that will come out and look at our peer visits and look at what we're doing to make sure that we're in the classrooms and talking to each other about the students and what they're taking away. The PLCs, Avid, the Avid, we have three Avid classes right now, and those Avid classes were based on essentially that data we went and found last year. We found one class, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade in English of students who were underrepresented and were identified as GATE and were not going into GATE classes and were failing. And a lot of it had to do with the fact that they didn't feel comfortable in the higher level classes, they didn't want to be the one, or the two, or the third student. So, we have an entire class in each grade now, and we call them GATE students, and we have an Avid elective as their support class, so they are GATE with support. And the first quarter was a really tough quarter because suddenly the expectations were very real, and they, the students had learned to not be, I suppose, good at meeting expectations. And we are now coming around to the point where they accept the fact that I can do these things, and they're not going to leave me alone, so I probably better start doing my homework. Our climate, as I mentioned, and school safety is a huge thing. We're increasing our attendance, which means that kids are in class more, and you can walk down the line to student achievement. The number of interventions that we're using have increased. Verbal judo is something that we brought in. J.C. Hunter, one of our local detectives, is fantastic at teaching individuals on how to navigate their way through a difficult conversation. The staff unilaterally let me know that that was the best professional training they've had in many, many years, mostly because it came from somebody who was probably slightly more jaded and older than them. It was pretty interesting. That was the way the message came, too. That's not me making it up. And as far as our school safety is concerned, we're refining our school emergency process right now. The old version was, let's everybody evacuate and go to the stadium. We have a fairly large and interesting topography to our campus, and we would lose a couple hundred students on the way to the stadium. We now have emergency drills that are relative to the building in which the classes are being held. So, the walk should be between two and three minutes long. We already tried it out, we had a great emergency drill, it lasted all of 10 minutes, kids were back in class, it was great. Everybody was accounted for. And finally, school leadership. We have three instructional coordinators. The issue with a principal, the thing that I see is the greatest conflict is wanting to be in classrooms and never finding the ability to be in classrooms the way I want to be. And so, the instructional coordinators that we have at Santa Barbara High School are essentially the eyes and ears and message that I wish I could do personally. We have a special projects coordinator, the individual that is referred to as a Title I coordinator at other places, predominantly data and instructional focus. We have a bridge program coordinator. That individual oversees the combo classes, those two-period English classes. And if you think of it as a capillary system, if you have blood flowing from one end to the other, it doesn't go backwards. The combo classes for us, everybody's smiling at me, I know. The combo classes-
This is purpose, too.
I said it on purpose, I know. The combo classes are our bridge between the EL program and the regular program. They're our valve, our safe way, our gate to make sure that the kids don't slide backwards. And the person who oversees that right now, Janet Gordon, is one of the best teachers I have ever seen, and she doesn't take no for an answer, and she is probably the best version of internal accountability when it comes to peer-to-peer training and peer-to-peer expectations that I've seen in quite some time. A principal can say something, or an assistant principal can say something to a teacher, but when a peer has respect and says it to a teacher, there's a lot more weight involved in there, and that's what Janet Gordon is. And then finally, our English Language Learner Coordinator, Linda Caruso, had spent some time down here at the district office last year, she's back on campus, and she's on a full-time release position to oversee instruction in English Language Learner classes and all the ELD classes, including SADI, all the way up through the academic core. And that's because of the issues I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation with our English Language learners. We have too many EL students who were finding no support at all, and we have too many teachers who had good intentions but lacked the skills. And so, we're building in support, and that's where the leadership comes in. We also have our site council and our ELAC and community oversight, and I'm still going out to parent homes and visiting with them and listening to parent and community concerns. We have an individual who was on our ELAC, is now, was voted onto our site council and is a liaison between both entities, and we make sure that both communities on our campus have a very clear line of communication. And so, the hardest thing for us right now is translating the budget for our ELAC committee so it makes sense. And essentially, that concludes the presentation. I'm sorry, I was ripping through this, I wanted to be first. Cynthia says no. There's got to be, you know, there's got to be an over-under. If I'm LaCuesta, I'm a little tiny school, but if I'm Santa Barbara-
I need to comment on this. You know, what actually happens is that the principals get together before this, and they say, "So, are you going to go over?" Nah, I'm not going over that. Nah, I'm not, nah. I'm just going to give them this, and this, and this. All right? We all agreed? This, and this, and this. Then what you see in the actual presentations is, there's some other competition going on here that's much more important than how quickly we move through this. So, thank you for spending the time on that part of it.
I appreciate the efficiency of a plan that all of us have been through, so I think it's fantastic. And they don't escape scrutiny if they, there's something really important.
Getting educators to be concise is a feat in and of itself, so, yes, I applaud your brevity. Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to begin?
I'll start. Since this may be my last time at the microphone during a single-plan meeting, I wanted to thank all of you again for your hard work on this, and it's been interesting watching the transition of the plans as they've come along in different formats. And this latest format, I think, is a big improvement, the one that we're using now, although there's still things about it that are challenging to read as a layperson, but I appreciate your presentations clarifying things for us. I have a couple of questions for you, and I apologize, I'm probably going to ask you more questions because some of these are just issues that we've discussed in the past that may not be completely germane to the single plan, but counselors at your school have, there's been a lot of discussion about having appropriate counseling services for kids, especially because you probably have the biggest achievement gap or extremes at your school. Have there been continued efforts with counseling staff in their role as helping the kids to achieve-
I would say-
-supporting these goals?
Sorry. I would say the counseling staff at Santa Barbara High School this year is radically different than it was last year. You'll see, if you walk through our counseling office this year, a pretty cohesive unit. We have two new counselors on staff, one of whom, Melissa Perez, is absolutely a wonderful person. She was what we would consider one generation away from an AB 540 student, completely underrepresented, first-generation college-bound, graduated Berkeley, then went to Cal Poly, and has Latinas at heart, and is always angry at one girl or another for listening to her boyfriend. So, it's pretty funny, and she's taken a lot of students under her wing, and she's already helped them with the attainment structure. And the attainment structure being the, all of those steps along the way to applying to college, and it's been a fantastic addition. One of the major changes that we did make was moving one counselor to the athletics office and having him be an athletics advisor. Now, at Santa Barbara High School, where you have 1,000 athletes, 40% or a little more than 40% of the school are athletes, part of the issue there is that not only are most of those athletes involved potentially in one way or another with the NCAA clearinghouse, which is the four-year plan plus one, essentially, they also run the gamut between EL, Title I, GATE, and everything else. And so, we're focusing on our freshmen, especially this year, freshmen and sophomores in athletics. The second counselor we hired is a freshman counselor, so we've paired a freshman counselor, an athletic advisor who's also working on freshmen and sophomores, with a teacher on special assignment through the People Retention Block Grant, who is acting as our freshman advisor, and he is working as essentially a dean of sorts. And he's the guy who's working with our freshman counselor, so it's this one-two punch of, "All right, we're going to support you, but we're going to hold you to expectations as well." He's the reason that our attendance has gone up and that our freshman class is doing very well. So, his name is David Meister. Steve Meister's son. And the two of them together, working with Susan Snyder and the university club that Craig had mentioned before, have done an amazing job. So, we have kids in the freshman class who have been identified as students who should be going to college, and we've sort of circled the wagons around them. We have kids in sophomore, junior, and senior classes all identified now. And we have no less than 60 in each class of students who are underrepresented or first-generation college-bound, who have GPAs that meet CSU or UC minimum requirements, and who otherwise would not have any idea of how to navigate the structure. And so, we've supported them.
Great, thank you. Your truancy coordinator position, which there's no longer, or was no longer someone in that position at the beginning of the year, have you shifted those responsibilities to someone else?
To Mr. Meister.
Okay, so he's handling all of those, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. I noticed that the, and I wanted to thank Dr. Hayden for providing us this focus-goal-driven data sheet for each of the school sites. It's been very nice to have that. Looking at your demographic spectrum changes for your underrepresented students in high, performing in AP and GATE classes, you had a kind of a drop, not a significant drop, but a drop in almost every category except academies. Just wondering if, because that's, I know, always a struggle, and that's something that's been important for you, working on raising that, the numbers of Latino students in your AP and GATE classes. Do you have any thoughts on that? And that's from 2004-05 to 05-06, we don't have the 06-07-
Correct, we don't have the current data.
Or the latest data.
And again, the data will change a little bit going into spring semester as well. Honestly, I think a lot of it had to do with a culture divided. We had a pretty interesting culture during the year last year and the preceding year. I think that some of the issues involved the student attitudes, teacher attitudes towards students. Attendance was huge. The idea that, it's peripheral, but it isn't. The idea that many students weren't coming to school meant to me and to others that it wasn't necessarily a place that either was inviting or motivating. That leads all the way up the chain, so to speak, to our advanced classes. And so, I believe that this year, things will change. Things will absolutely change. The implementation of Apple, the Academy of Public Policy and Leadership, for example, which is, let's see, there's one more, it's almost perfect for the demographics of the school. There's one more girl than there are boys. There are something like three less Title I students than GATE students. We have 47% of the students are white, and 49% are Latino, I believe. They've already gone to see the State Supreme Court, and they've already gone to see Madeleine Albright, and they came back upset at a couple of things that she said about kids. So, they're engaged, and it's good. Well, I'll talk to you after. But it's, the idea is that with that and the addition of those honors classes, plus the addition of student placements using data, the school is taking a more parental role and is reaching out to parents and teaching the parents what it means when a student says, "Can I take the college prep class and not the honors class?" It's just the same thing. It's not.
Right. Thank you. Just one more question. You were talking about the instructional leadership team and going into classrooms and doing some evaluations and peer mentoring and things like that. How does that get, are they on their release, I mean, are they on their free period when they do that? Are you paying out of categorical fens-
No.
-to release them? How's that working?
No. They're doing that on their prep period.
Prep period, okay.
Yeah. And so, it's their sixth period, and they're not being paid out of categoricals at all. And the great part about it is that, for me, I'm kind of proud of them because there are a lot of teachers who are very reticent to say, "I'm a master teacher. I'm somebody who has a lot of knowledge about instructional strategies," because teachers are, for the most part, kind of shy when it comes to that kind of thing. And so, they've done a great job of actually working with people, and they've learned to accept the fact that they have a voice, and they've learned to accept the fact that they're wrong sometimes, but now they're learning how to work together. That's very powerful.
Great. Great. Those were my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Oh, that's, you want to go? I want to follow up on the question about the instructional leadership teams. When teachers are released from their classroom to go observe another teacher- When teachers are released from their classroom to go observe another teacher, do they need to make those observations within their department, or can they go to any teacher's classroom?
They can go to any teacher's classroom. For example, last week I was walking into my office and an art teacher was inquiring where the chemistry teacher she was about to observe was. She just wanted to know where the classroom was. And so our instructional leadership team, PJ Carmean, the special projects coordinator in particular, if necessary, will arrange a substitute for you for an entire day and will plan for you the teachers in which you'll visit. And that's worked out very, very well, especially for our new teachers.
Actually, I'm glad you said that. Ann's not here anymore, Ann Harder. She had a release day just a week or two ago and went to a physics teacher's classroom. She said it was by, she teaches English. She said it was by far the best visitation she made all day long. So I wanted to, to make certain that they were, they had the freedom to see some of the best across the disciplines over the course of a day.
Yeah, the, the emphasis is instructional strategies. The topic can be vastly different. Sometimes it would be, "Because I have classroom management issues." Sometimes it's because I have reading, and it goes all the way through.
Thank you. This is really a comment on all three of the budgets connected to the single plans. And I, I just wanted, I just want to double-check. But it seems like a holdover from the old SIP days when people came and basically lobbied for SIP money. But a lot of expenditures fall under SIP that don't necessarily seem as connected to student achievement as trying to move English learners forward, for instance, or high school students who haven't taken algebra yet, that sort of thing. But there really isn't any other category for that kind of spending, and it's all necessary spending. But it's appropriate spending, correct? I'll leave it to the two bosses to-
It is, from what I've seen.
Okay.
Almost anything fits under the, under the umbrella.
Right. And unless there is, there's been a lot of PTA, you know, fundraising, which we cannot depend on, it really seems like the only category available for, you know, theatrical performances, or I'm looking at, you know, art supplies, or-
Actually, we have our chief compliance officer right here in the room. If I may ask him to comment on that.
I, I think it's worth it to-
Your observation is a very important one. You are absolutely right. The instructions to the principals have been that there are certain categories of funds that you may not use for those purposes. However, those funds, including SIP funds, or what we now call the block grant, there is more liberty in the way those monies are spent. I also want to share with you that it's very clear from the state that those monies are becoming restrictive every single year. And I suspect that there'll come a time very soon when those monies are also dedicated solely to improvement of proficiency in ELA and math. So we're not far away from that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. You have literacy coaches and you have math coaches. They are credentialed teachers?
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're also, they're on the, the school district's substitute list. Meaning they've, they've passed the C-Best-
Okay.
-they've got their, their undergraduate degrees. If they're not credentialed, the C-Best allows them to be with students in the classroom.
And then I just have a question about probably the single largest expenditure, and that is the expenditure for the freshman advisor from your pupil retention block grant.
Yes.
Is that an assistant principal who has been now designated, or an extra assistant principal, if you will?
He's, he's called a teacher on special assignment because the district, well, a couple of reasons. First of all, we can't have another assistant principal.
Okay.
He has an administrative credential-
Okay.
...and is doing the duties, I would say, three-quarters of the duties that would allow him to act as an assistant principal. We don't have, under the district personnel office, the title of a dean, so we can't use that appropriately.
Okay.
And so teacher on special assignment is the best possible arrangement that fits within the, the parameters of the pupil retention block grant.
Okay.
So, for example, he's a member of the union and therefore doesn't observe or evaluate teachers. He doesn't carry out many, many of the duties that the APs carry out.
Okay. It was just that if it was a, it's not a teacher on release time because the amount of money doesn't match up. That was-
Correct.
-my dissonance. And then finally, just an observation. Santa Barbara High, of the three high schools, has the largest number of Title I students. And yet, the amount of Title I money that you get, as compared to many, many of our elementary schools, seems very paltry. And I'm, I puzzle over this every year, how to continue to keep those students identified all the way through our secondary programs. Because the benefit is to them. I, you know, it's just-
Yes, we go over the funding formula, and it is, it is stacked toward students at the lower-grade levels. Jan, Michael, do you want to comment on it?
Sure. I'll say one thing, and Michael has probably a more technical answer. We get Title I monies allocated to us based on a formula that comes from the census. And it's, it's allocated based on the number of free and reduced lunches, people below the poverty level. And, and those, and then we start counting who among our students qualifies as Title I. And there are several ways to qualify as a Title I student. And then we divvy up the funds. And it does, when I look at the amount of money that the elementary district gets, it's unbelievable. Michael?
I don't have an answer to why.
Yeah, okay.
There is, however, an answer, and it's a fairly simple one. The directions that we've been given is to qualify as many of our schools as we can as recipients of Title I. That meant that this year, for example, we qualified Dos Pueblos High School. We continued to fund San Marcos. What that has meant is that the share for each school has decreased. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More EIA funds.
Okay.
When we were at Oxnard High School, they said they made a large effort to sign up kids for the free and reduced lunch so that they would have more Title I dollars.
And they linked it specifically to college preparation. If you sign up for this, then your child will be eligible for these services that will prepare them for college. They made a direct link between those two very seemingly unconnected services.
Well, we, we do have two people on campus whose sole duty it is to find the students who were on the list in, in the last two years and are not currently, and speak to them one-on-one and recruit them for those purposes. Almost entirely, it has to do with either a parent being somewhat embarrassed about their financial situation and just being tired of it, and just that. And, or the opposite is the student. Same sort of feeling from the student. I just, I'm done, I'm enough. I still, and yet, the student still has enough money to leave campus and go get lunch at Jack in the Box or Taco Bell around the corner.
Because they, they might have a job, their parents.
One other aspect responding to your question. The, an increase in the number of free and reduced lunch students at each of our schools would not increase their share of Title I. What it would, however, do is it would permit schools that are presently targeted assistant schools to move to a school-wide program. However, what it would do is it might increase the amount of state economic impact aid that they would receive. There, therein lies the, the plus. Mr. Zettel pointed out that we'd be remiss if we didn't mention publicly that the state did give a substantial increase in EIA funding this year because the state coffers are doing very well. All right? So an increase in free and reduced lunch will increase the share of EIA funds to the schools.
Okay.
But not Title I.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Well, along those lines, though, I was also impressed with what Oxnard High School had done. They were saying essentially, "Don't pay attention to the title that says free and reduced lunch. This is the form that qualifies us for other, other financial sources that are important to our school." And EIA would be one of those.
Okay.
It's like the state sister to Title I.
But it was, it was, it almost made me think of, for instance, the coupon system that Dr. Carney used-
Yes.
...for her supplemental services, after-school services. Essentially, the principal indicated that they made a direct link on the flyer that went home, that your student would be getting tutorial services, college preparation services, that sort of thing.
Yes.
And I think it's an intriguing prospect.
And as I recall, the principal told us that they caught them at the door as they were coming in, said, "You have to fill this out, too."
Yeah.
So even if your child doesn't qualify, we need this filled out.
I just had, oh, on this topic, yeah, I just have one more question after that.
Just, it seems like about maybe three years ago, we went on a campaign to try to identify more secondary students. And I think Mr. Gonzalez was instrumental in that, and Mike Couch and others. And isn't this new point of use, whatever you call it, the kids type a number in instead of, there's no stigma associated any longer with-
Point of service.
Point of service, thank you. The stigma's gone, and so for those kids that maybe were embarrassed by it, that, that's no longer an issue. Didn't we have, see a big increase after that in the number of students that were identified?
Junior high school, when I was at Greta Valley, we began that. And, and junior high school, yes, absolutely. I think what happens is that, as the students become more mobile, in high school, they go away from it. And Mrs. Harder's exactly right, that jobs probably pay, play a large part of that. So.
Thanks. This really, while I know it's not necessarily germane to the, the single plan, I think that there is a direct connection to the single plan, and that's your lack of faculty, of a faculty lounge. And I think that not having that shared time together has a direct impact on students and on student achievement. And I don't know if there's a solution. I, I mean, I, I know people would laugh and go ahead if I said, "Bring another portable onto the campus." I don't know if there's a way to use a room at the Boys and Girls Club during the school day when their facility is, is very underutilized, or, I don't know what the solution is, but it seems to me that we really ought to be trying to find a solution to that.
I, I have one.
Oh, good. Okay. A roof garden.
No. The only unused space on our campus right now is the original locker room built in 1924. It is everything that Freddy Krueger's nightmares are composed of. And for $540,000, we can convert it into a multimedia center and faculty library, including a variety of other things, and a lot of thought and drawings have gone into it already.
Okay.
And with your help, Mrs. Harder-
But that doesn't solve the problem in the short term.
So, no, it doesn't help in the short term. It doesn't help at all. But what we have done in, as a short-term solution, there's a, a very small courtyard right outside my office. And so I'm gonna buck up with some donation money for picnic tables and a variety of other things. And then, and every Friday, it will be a place hosted for the staff. We'll have barbecues and other things. Right now, the staff have just, they amaze me. You know, they, every day, there's, there's one teacher or another who opens up his or her room to host a bunch of people, and they, they, they do the best they can, but they're, they're kind of worn down right now. And it's, it's an issue.
Is mixing other discussion topics with this, but the facilities master plan, which, should there be a decision to move the LaCuesta site off Santa Barbara campus?
No, that will happen. TheCuesta is its own little building at Santa Barbara.
So that's not an option if that were to happen?
Well, actually, the, the classrooms, the classrooms and office space in LaCuesta are, are, are between, are between Santa Barbara High School classes.
Right.
So the issue, and I walked our department chairs through the locker room and talked about my vision of, of what it could be. One of the department chairs said, "Well, you know, you could easily make two classrooms out of this." Okay, so the result would be 11 traveling teachers and not 13. You're still, the net effect is, is less than zero. The issue is that we need a place, and we need a place that creativity can really take over. So I think that not only are there individuals in the community who can help, I think there are individuals who can help figure out who we can, we can solicit. And once I have those individuals put together and we start speaking about what the, the actual plan is, then I'll come to the board with that plan, so you have an idea of exactly sort of the, the three phases involved, and you'll have a good idea of whether or not you can support it.
I don't have a lot of questions. I just wanted to know, was the verbal judo for the students or for the teachers?
For the teachers. The, the best part of the, the presentation was when J.C. pulled out the taser. It didn't have the, the battery in it, but it pulled out his taser and said, "Give me your cellphone." And of course, referring to what teachers would like to do secretly with every student with a cellphone in class. Aside from that, it was, it was really good. It was very, very well-received. And, and it really helped teachers understand that, okay, you screw your head on right, this is why we're here. Kids don't all come to us completely adjusted and with perfect views. And then at the same time, when they say something to you, it's not necessarily about you. It's about the baggage they came to school with that day. So it was, it was very helpful.
They don't always express what they're feeling either the right way.
And nor do-
It comes out differently than they expected sometimes.
Exactly. As, as with some adults, it's equally true.
That's true. So with the teachers who are going into other teachers' classrooms-
Yes.
-is it the ones that, you said there was objections by, is it the ones that are having their, their classroom reviewed, or is it the people coming in that are objecting?
Both. Predominantly, it would be the individuals who don't want to make comments on another member of their association. I don't want to walk into Dr. Malikoff's room and presuppose that I have more skill or motivation than she does in, in whatever the, the topic is. And so the first step, I think, was really getting rid of that protocol that we talked about earlier, and just letting people kind of make connections again. And part of the issue is that we don't have that faculty lounge, and so making connections means breaking down psychological barriers as well as physical.
Thank you.
Well, I have a real quick follow-up on that question, and then I have another question. Do, you said that the, the observers, the teachers who, the members of the instructional leadership team-
Yes.
-who go and observe have, make comments. Do they make their comments in writing? Do they make their comments just verbally to the other teacher? Is that, that's what happens? They just give, give them verbal feedback?
There was a perception that if any comments were put in writing, that it would somehow land in my hands, and evaluations and judgments would be made. And the message to the teachers has, from me, has repeatedly been, "I expect you to try something completely new and fall flat on your face and, and have a horrible time, but you learn from it, and it's a good thing." And, and that's kind of what we do all the time. It's not about evaluation, it's not about judgment, it's not about any of these things. But you need a little time, so they have time.
So it's something that takes place entirely between the two faculty members?
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, I think, I like that. I think that's a great idea. The other question I had that you didn't touch on in your, well, actually, there's, yeah, the one that you didn't touch on. The controversial issue about the attendance and tardiness issue about students who have, can't have a certain number of tardies, et cetera. And I'm wondering how that has been working this year? Are you seeing a reduction in tardies that you think could be attributed to that policy?
I think it's the overall, the overall culture is, no, the overall culture is still resisting against it because that's what kids do. The overall feeling on campus is, as a student, I should expect somebody hound me. And that's exactly what we're doing. And so we have, you know, teachers are teaching and administrators are administrating, and we have- we have as many people as possible at the end of the passing period doing tardy sweeps. And it doesn't mean spot checks. It means if you're in the hallway and you don't have a pass and a verbal commitment was given to you by your teacher, if that's okay, go to the bathroom or go get a drink of water, that's not good enough. And so now kids are going back to their teachers and saying, give me a hall pass because if they don't have the answer that we're looking for, we walk them straight down to our in-house suspension center. So, you know, I've made a lot of friends at the senior parking lot about five minutes after the bell after lunch and we talk about parking passes and what it means to have that kind of privilege. It's just the, it's being a parent on a, on a slightly larger level.
Do you think the policy is going to result in a number of students not participate, participating in graduation ceremonies?
I don't think it will be more students than last year. I think that the amount of work that went into last year will go down on behalf of the administrators because we will have refined the process and will have be, we'll be advertising it a lot. We're using attendance now for ASB activities. So you don't get into the big game if you have, at this point of the year, if you have 10 truancies, you don't get into, you know, the homecoming dance and various other things. And we just cross kids off the list when they want to buy the ticket, they just can't. So that kind of thing reinforces it. I think in the end, most of the students will have found a way to figure out exactly what they need to do to make sure they're eligible.
And are there ways for them to make it up?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's Saturday schools and various other things. It has to be done within the state reporting period, though. Last year, the problem was fixing things and we had, we had individuals who were trying to circumnavigate the, the system and that was creating problems.
Okay. One last question. And that is, in your, in the introduction to your proposed, to your report, you said there are still some language barrier issues, but more services and resources have been made available for students and staff working with the bilingual needs of students. What are some of the things, the additional resources that have been made available?
Classified and certificated hires that have been made. We have more individuals who are bilingual on campus and can therefore help their colleagues. We have people who are designated as Spanish language callers, essentially, who will reach out to parents on behalf of other, other teachers. And as far as, we've had some turnover unfortunately this year, but the idea is that those skills also translate into classroom instruction. It's the, you know, there are key words and, and key vocabulary words that we're trying to teach teachers to be cognizant of. So in physics, for example, it's, you know, one strategy is giving vocabulary before a lesson, pre-teaching, but it's also understanding what the Spanish version of those letters or those letters, those words are on behalf of the teacher. So the teacher can understand that if I hear a certain thing, oh, that's what that means. And it, it's just a way of breaking down barriers.
I think that brings us to a conclusion. Thank you. And, oh, Dr. Sarves?
We're also asking for your approval of the single plans that have been presented tonight.
Your approval, Paul. We're asking for your approval.
No.
Yes, the board does need to approve the plans that have been presented, so can, I would like to entertain a motion.
Well, it's my pleasure to move approval of the, well, I guess I should read the actual language. The, um, single plans for student achievement for the, do we need to separate Washington as an elementary school? Should we make a separate motion on that one or do them all? Okay. For Washington Elementary School and all of the high schools for the current school year.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries four, zero with one absence. Great. So congratulations, you're off the hook for another year. Very nice job. I do want to commend you all on what you are doing at the school sites and also on the professional level of your presentations. It really gives the board a lot of information and I think helps us to understand the data even better. So thank you. And I would like to also acknowledge Ms. Rodriguez's last, uh, single site presentation as you, single plan presentation as you have been alluding to. We'll certainly, we certainly have appreciated your, your comments and your insight into the, the documents and we'll, we'll miss those, although you will still be active in the district, I'm sure. So, but, but just not necessarily at a board meeting, yes. Okay, the board needs to convene into closed session, so we will adjourn our public session and we will, oh, and we will adjourn into closed session. I do want to point out that our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, November 28th. And I want to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your, your long weekend.